It is 9:30. Let's get started. Other meeting? Oops. We have called the meeting to order for Tuesday, September 9, 2025. Before we get started, we need to adopt the agenda. All of council was sent an email. You know question to the validity of what is it eight point ones and North East. And then we missed one this morning similar but so we've had a couple concerns raised. Because we're in the middle of a public hearing. I have just a couple comments to say first of all, this conversation was actually planned to happen last Tuesday after the public hearing. Because it's completely unrelated to the public hearing. But we as you all know, we went very late last Tuesday and we moved all the in camera stuff to today. It was going to be part of the constant dialogue, but for transparency sakes today we actually listed as a separate agenda item. Once again, I'm going to say it's unrelated to the public hearing. But Marta, our legal counsel here at the city and Mr Fletcher and I had a conversation this morning about what I would say if we wanted to pull this or not. I'm suggesting we do. Only because there's a perception involved perception of fairness in a public hearing. I asked if there's specifically anything about the school site, etc. That's mentioned in this Northeast servicing update. There is not. But if with your agreeance council. I think we should pull it and reschedule it to next Tuesday. Tuesday? It has to be Tuesday. Can't be Monday, right?
Could be Monday post the public here. That would be fine, Mayor.
But we didn't call the public hearing.
We didn't add.
It's a meeting. Yeah. We'll figure it out after this, but we're not going to deal with it today. So it'll either be after the public hearing is closed and a decision has been made on that school site. Or on the 16th. So if you guys are okay with that, if there's any questions you have about information you need for that public hearing, we can talk about that on Monday publicly.
I get clarity?
Go ahead.
Just so just for clarity purposes, we're talking about both presentations, five point one and eight point ones or ten?
No, just eight point one.
Just eight point one? And and five point one is new business arising and and policy development, but you don't. It has nothing to do with And policy development, but you don't, it has nothing to do with. Northeast servicing, that has nothing to do.
Correct.
I mean, I just I'll challenge that because the servicing, one of the reasons that the recommendations not to be forward with. The development period is based on servicing and the front end policy. Is directly related to that with how we've been moving, recommending to move forward. Regardless of what council's decision is, so. Because the servicing's been tied into an art north for a year or four more. I don't see how the policy not actually. Be relevant to the decision for that public hearing.
Counselor, so we're not actually discussing a policy, we're discussing principles to enable discussion with stakeholders to ultimately create a policy. Those principles are not related to the Northeast, they're related to city investments across the entirety of it. No linkage between those two things in any practical sense. And without that, we will not be able to move forward to begin discussions because we won't have council blessing of. The construct under which we would look at a front end pulsing a due course.
Those principles will then, if if approved today, will be taken to the development community.
That's correct.
Okay, but again. Like the, one of the recommendations is that if it's not in the MVP that we don't front end it, that directly affects whether or not we front end the north, it's interpretation of the MVP stands right now. So. I understand that, you know, the policy can't move forward till council makes a decision that now or in the future. But unfortunately, because of the time in that the public hearing. Saying that the one of the recommendations is explicit about the MVP, the MVP has been explicitly related to this this type of land. This location of land, I don't see how it not be connected. I understand it will affect other lands as well, but it will also affect this one. And so I I don't see how you can separate the two.
The discussion, yeah, go ahead, Marta.
From a legal perspective, it doesn't impact the decision of a public hearing.
Which is a redistricting.
It is also a public discussion, so if if there are any questions related to the OSL permitting principles I get discussed today that. Any counterfeits is relevant to bring up at the public hearing on Monday, that is fully within council's ability to. Also, from my perspective, it just because something may be linked to a matter that may be before council in the future, doesn't mean that business on other issues that are. Attentionly linked to it should halt, like there really is no reason to. Policy principles today for.
Yes, and I hear you and vote wherever you want, but it's not, it not may be linked to something that may be in the future, it is linked to land that is being decided in the future, so there's no may in this. And that's the challenge that I've had right now.
I guess there's also no policy, or it's 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 discussion on principles.
That's the point that we are discussing, and it is, it is related to land that is going to happen in the future.
Not related to the redistricting decision that is made on Monday. If council, if council wants to move it, we will dutifully move it to where you wish to, but that's our recommendation, there's no.
Wes.
I, yeah. I had my problems as well with this on the agenda. There is, there's a reality and then there's a perception of what is true.
Northeast servicing.
Northeast servicing. Whether we're talking about principles of front ending or not, they are linked, at least in my mind. And and when I read the principles that were going forward. That's exactly where my mind went to is a discussion on the school site because it's relevant. And so. You have to. And here's, I'll give you my other. Thing that came into play, I was asked to meet with the school board and I said. A public school. Meeting with me as a prospective candidate of the future. And if it, if it considers something that's in the public hearing, I shouldn't meet with you until after the public hearing is closed. And so we moved that meeting till after the fifteenth. It's, it's really the same discussion. We're talking about the future of the city, but it ties on to what will happen in the Northeast, in particular in relation to the school and it's a. It's a servicing decision. And so in my mind, they were linked on one vote. I'd be happy to have my discussion about it today if the rest of council says we should discuss it, but my vote is to say. We should close the public hearing, it's much cleaner that way, there is no confusion about whether it is. Servicing was involved or not.
And I would, I would caution. Chicken and the egg conversation, the policy that we're going to be discussing today in principle only is bigger and broader than. Then the redistricting. And if you let a redistricting, a smaller one piece influence your bigger decision, but you need to separate those ways. You really do, I know they're linked, but if this redistrict was not in front of us, would your. Thoughts on the principles change?
Well, no, they wouldn't, but I tell you what, if if I met with the school board and somebody came to me and sorry, and it was brought here. I would have been called down and said, you shouldn't have met because the public hearing was open.
This is not related to the public hearing as our legal expert said, and I just want to point out in the thing about the MVP, it says. Talking about it prematurely, but developers' campers that propose to cities through unique needs and financing that would be read on case by case. So it doesn't neglect ever using. For the Northeast servicing as a capital project. There's just principles.
Go ahead and say, and if we want to be transparent, this is what we do.
I would need. Hey, there is a motion to amend the agenda to remove eight point one for sure. I'm not seeing any opposition to that right now, but okay, we'll stick with that, okay.
Yeah, I would absolutely align with removing eight dot one, it's in camera and. Public hearing that absolutely. Gives that perception and we want to be clear and transparent, so take that off. Five dot one is in public today, so you know, it is transparent, it is open. And it, I think it's important that we give administration, start to give administration at least some high level. Guidelines to start developing a policy of how we work with developers. In in future for offsite levies and how we service land. If if we keep. If we don't have at least that guideline, I don't know how we could work forward later. To develop a firm policy to address some of the servicing and offsite levy. Requirements or issues, so I think we need to get. Five dot one discussed in in public here today and give administration some guidance so they can. Move forward and just amend the agenda to delete eight dot one.
And I realize I don't know whether this is inappropriate or we're in order here or not, but. I mean, looking at the summary and the recommendations, yes, I understand that this is just to guide discussions and consultation with the development community. But I mean, it's, it's around the policy doesn't come back to council until quarter two of two thousand twenty six. So I mean, I know that. The fifteenth and sixteenth are the last two days, but. Can we not have this discussion, it cleans it up, either the fifteenth or the sixteenth. And then we still have, that gives administration lots of time to have that. Discussion with the development community along normal kind of working with, working with the offsite. Five point one, I'm talking about five, yeah, I mean, because I mean realistically, why is they, they just need to draft principles to carry forward with the consultation with development community. That's, that will come back to council quarter two of next term. So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, what's, why, why the rush today when it's.
This is our last meeting.
Well, it is the last meeting, and I realize that, but we're caught in a real interesting position that creates.
Yeah, no.
And so what I'm saying is, like, what I'm suggesting is the cleaner version is, and I realize it's time and it's not ideal. But either after the, after the fifteenth or after the sixteenth, I'm just wondering from administration's perspective, is that, that. Does one week delay that process at all?
Counselor, no, it doesn't, sorry, my fault.
Go ahead.
No, one week does not, I mean, the value of SCOW is is the ability to discuss things in a little bit more. But a week's delay will not materially impact.
So I'm suggesting Cheryl that we. Demand the agenda with two separate motions, remove five point one, we'll vote on it, and we'll debate one, we'll vote on. We're in debate, really, on.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I'm trying to determine where we are.
Going to do eight point one first or five?
To see how they presented on the screen.
Nowhere.
Okay, so we have two separate motions, the first one is that September ninth, two thousand twenty five agenda be adopted as amended with the deletion of eight point one. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Yeah, I can do that.
Anything on eight point one?
No, I think that discussions are around question, and I think this. This clears that right up.
Anyone else? Vote for the vote on that one. Counselor Jolly's. Is Counselor Jolly online? I cannot see her.
She was there.
I can't see her vote, so.
I've got a green check mark.
Thank you, yeah, yep, I can't see if your camera's on, because you're, even the little square that's blank completely disappears.
That's just a setting on your computer.
Well, it's not my computer that's presenting this, so. But now we need a separate motion to take off five point one.
We can do that. That's some kind of ninth agenda, adopt is amended with the deletion of the item five point one, and suppose I'll say levy on end policies. An idea of promise, yeah, I just want to comment quickly is. On top of the fact that, yes, we can delay to the fifteenth or sixteenth, let's just say worst case scenario, if it's delayed to November. That's actually, in my opinion, better because the next council is the one deciding this policy. So we're determining the direction, which could be completely done by the next council. And we're actually increasing the workload of administration if we say yes, and the next council says we're going a different direction and do everything you just did. So these principles should be signed off by the next council and not this one, if you actually want to have a strategic transition. And on top of it, everything else that was just discussed. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah. I think that. The counter to what was just said is that this council has had all of the background discussions. On wanting to change offsite levy front ending policy. We've had all of the backgrounders previous to understand the financial implications of offsite. Levis, implications to to the city, to what our debt limits are. Impacts of not having money to do other, other things, if we spend it all on, on sewers. And and water lines, we don't have money left to to build, you know, it affects our debt limit and doesn't have money to build a pool or whatever, we've had all of those discussions. Over two and a half years. And so this council. Is better positioned to have and provide this kind of guidance. To administration so that they can move forward and start to develop. Clear policy, the policy will still be reviewed by the new incoming council, they will still have final say on it. But at least, and and we should always view councils as an ongoing body. We we don't stop and start it, if we get into the stop and start guidance to administration. Everything will come to a grinding halt. We we owe it. The the development community has been waiting for this policy. For the same amount of time that we have. And and we owe it to them to start working on this and start flushing it out and. And at least give our administrative team. Some, some guidance to start moving forward and start having those discussions. With the development community to come back and start drafting a policy. Yes, the new incoming. Council will will have final say on it. Absolutely, but we we should at least start and. And give administration that some guidance so that they can start living on it. So I I think we need to. Look at it in in that perspective and wait and move forward.
I'll just say so. Thanks, thanks, counter, counter. I take all those points, but by delaying it a week even, I mean, it's up to agenda committee, if you go back to agenda committee to deal with and will will address all of your concerns, so. I I, it's much cleaner this way, council and perception is reality and I just believe that. These are major decisions and they should be clean and I apologize to administration, I know there's been a lot of work done on this. But I I just don't believe waiting a week, or if even if we wait till November, I just don't believe that. I mean, I take all of Counselor Killick's points, I think they're well, well. Spoken, but I think waiting a week won't delay that at all, so I'm, I'm supporting and we remove it.
Thank you, I'll be supporting this removal, we, in counter to Counselor Killick's mention. We're pushing everything to the last date here, there is a stop and start for council and we're at our stop, like, we're we're so close to the end that. I feel pushing things like this forward without complete clarity at the last moment is. Is, it's not, not the right direction to go, so I, you know, again, I respect administration as well, and if it delays it a week. You probably should have done this three months ago in all fairness, but anyhow, thank you.
My only comment is that the fact that we're entering into debate whether or not they should be on the agenda or not. He signals it shouldn't be there, we're not ready to discuss it, so that's my thought.
I will call for the vote. Pretty sure that's going to pass with Counselor Jolly, myself and Counselor Kinsley first. There we go, we have an agenda approved. Me then?
Yeah, that the September ninth. Meaning be approved as amended. Did it out of my head? All right. I was going to vote now.
So Jolly? Thank you. Anonymous, I think. All right. You have two. Speakers registered today, we have Carl German, a resident who wants to speak about reducing speed limit. On building road is Carl in person. Is that your computer? Awesome, you are ready to go, thank you for that. Can you share your screens that we're going to do, making sure it works? We got help right beside you if you need it. President of Jensen Lakes, all right.
Good morning, council, and thank you worship for letting me present today, my name is Carl German, I'm a recent resident of St. Albert. I was superintendent of schools, I'm not sure I should say that out loud after, actually seventeen years in Grand Prairie until our family recently moved here. Not that that matters for anything, but just to put into context, I I moved to St. Albert with my family. I am the vice chair of the Covenant Health Board of Directors, so we might be touching base on other issues in the future. As entities, and I'm also the vice chair of the Regional Advisory Committee sevens, so I'm. The person who's appointed for the St. Albert region, for that Lindsay is the chair. So just a little bit of background, I also work in St. Albert as a governance consultant, so helping out school boards and a variety of other entities as well too. Anyway, my main reason for being here today is to bring up my concern with Villanue Road, so we live in Jensen Lakes. And I want to just give thanks to your staff, because sometimes staff don't always get thank yous that they deserve, so Carrie certainly being kind and friendly and having me here. And I want to just give thanks to your staff because sometimes staff don't always get thank yous that they deserve. So Kerry certainly being kind and friendly and having me here today to the peace officers and RCMP who serve your community. They have been in touch with me and I've been in touch with them and to Dean, your manager of transportation. So you've got some fantastic staff. And I just want to thank them for being very cordial and accommodating. We live in a beautiful city, but you're off. You're obviously aware of that. It is one of the nicest places that I've ever seen, and I bike a lot, and so I go on the trails and have learned a little bit about this city by commuting around it. It's a very well planned city that's got lots of plans behind it. One of the challenges that we do see, though, when I'll say I see and some of my neighbors have as well, right there on the blue dot is where I live. And it is in the middle of Villeneuve Road, which has always been a busy road for thirty years, as I used to come from the north down through St. Albert and out because the community of Villeneuve was busy as well too with the with the highway. But speeds on that highway or on that road can be fairly quick, even though there's two traffic circles, one at the Alliance Church, one at Walmart. People tend to go very fast through there. And I do understand how that road was designed and what its purpose is. And I did read your transportation master plan. I've, because of my previous roles, I've attended a thousand board and committee meetings and then some. And I read that plan to get an understanding of the proposal of what might happen. It's an unfunded project, which you know, where the Ray Gibbons Drive would connect up eventually to the top of Costco at not an insignificant cost, and Villeneuve Road would be to a degree disconnected from Ray Given Drive, so it would slow down the traffic there. But that's the long term plan. Some of the concerns that I would have with that road and others do in my neighborhood is that the traffic is very busy and it's only about six hours or five hours a day when the traffic isn't going very fast on that road. And really, it makes it difficult to sleep. If you're anywhere on that road and you're expanding that road to the west, which is occurring right now, people aren't going sixty kilometers an hour. They're taking the Alberta leeway to go seventy. And then anybody who is actually speeding is going above seventy to a hundred on that road and dragging. Even with the temporary closure of Hogan Road, that road was still fast, and that's partially open and it's it's faster again. It's certainly used as a raceway, and I've done my due diligence. I've contacted the RCMP. They've asked me to phone at specific times. I phoned them. I thanked the peace officer the other day. They set up a speed trap by the Alliance Church, but that's where you're going forty. So you're not catching him in the middle of the road, but I did thank them for taking the time to be there and to listen to my concerns because it certainly is a challenge. What I would like to see, I guess, is because I don't want to be the person who just says something and doesn't actually provide a solution, is what's one of the solutions. One of them could be traffic calming. Now, this area is not eligible for community traffic calming because the road is on the outside of the community. And there were noise studies done, but they were done deep into Deer Ridge, and Dean and I have talked about what that might look like because that area has gone from two hundred to two thousand to pretty soon six thousand people will be in that area and there'll be more and more. And so what my recommendation is, and it really requires City Council to do it, is to reduce it down to forty kilometers an hour. Dean abides by traffic traffic standards that are kind of universal in Canada, and so that would require an exception of council to do something like that.
Do thirty second warning of thirty minutes.
I've seen other communities like AirGy reduce the speeds down and actually down to thirty kilometers an hour, and that would just add to the quality of life in the whole area. I also listed other recommendations with greenery, traffic barriers, traffic barrier wall, a larger developer fence, all that would be too much money. So the simple solution on a road like that is for council to make the the change to reduce the speed limit from its current sixty kilometers an hour to forty. There's nothing like a peace officer and RCMP officer catching you to give you demerit on your license and to take and to increase the cost of insurance. Photoradar doesn't do that.
We're talking about that today, too.
I bet you are.
So as you, as you will know, if you look at the agenda, we don't have business horizon on today's agenda, so I'm going to be pretty loosey with this. I'm going to allow for questions of Carl, obviously, right now. And then I did see Dean online. Aaron's here. If you want to talk to Aaron about something, I'm not sure. If that's okay, we can do that, right? Okay. Questions of Carl and then either Dean or whoever on on admin.
You can ask them at the same time?
Yeah.
Well, thanks. Yeah.
Made it. Go ahead.
Thanks for your presentation. I really appreciate your well thought out and obviously, you can see your background and with Covenant, we don't work with Ryan Haseman very I'm joking. I'm teasing. The I guess, you know, your solutions are really really what they're what it is, right? I mean, I I'm very familiar with Villeneuve Road. I I've traveled it many times and and since and I'm aware of a number of residents who've called because of the racing that's been there. They they basically use it as a drag strip. So I mean, even if we put it down to fifty, it's the question is enforcement, right? Because I mean, that's that's chuffed. You're suggesting forty would, I mean, do you see the same alignment with a ten kilometer an hour reduction because it's sixty now, right?
A ten kilometer reduction would significantly reduce the majority of people because the majority of people are law abiding citizens. The outliers of the speeders and the racers, they're not going to stop them without enforcement, but bringing the speed limit down, you're going to reduce noise. And it's a useful strategy in a variety of places because I know Villeneuve is not the only one, which turns about a new set of standards is common. So even a partial reduction would reduce the noise.
I know. Yes, you're you're, I mean, Drew is another another problem. I I I mean, that's kind of the question I'd have to you, Dean. I mean, you're, what's next from administrations? Do you when you lower a speed limit, what what's the process to come back to council for that, or is that just based on the recommendation of administration?
Well, I'm going to interrupt you real quick there. My question for Dean was, last term, we did a full network evaluation of all our roads. Was Villeneuve one of the ones that was recommended to be changed? I don't think it was.
No.
Okay, so.
No, three minute mayor. There was no recommended changes of Villeneuve Road. The only areas of Villeneuve that have changed is as the city boundary has adjusted and it changes from the highway six thirty-three to reduces from one hundred to eighty to sixty as we get into the urbanized city environment of St. Albert. But no changes were recommended as a result of our network wide study.
And so. Go ahead. Keep going. So Dean, you know my background. I was in charge of the and police service traffic section for too many years. When when we have transitions, as Carl's mentioned, you go to the two traffic circles now that go to forty and then the neighborhoods are forty. And and if you're coming from a sixty down to a forty, wouldn't you just, wouldn't have you just say, let's go to a fifty down to a forty? It's a lot safer than going from Carl's correct, sixty usually translates to seventy-two to seventy-five. So I mean, wouldn't administration recommendation is to change that whole road to fifty because as you're approaching traffic circles, you should their forty?
I I think the the reduction in speed, so a typical twenty kilometer per hour reduction is not held beyond kind of typical practices, even from highway speeds, as noted earlier with the six thirty-three to transition from one hundred to eighty to sixty. In the environment, considering, I mean, I I want to be very cautious here to suggest that posted speeds are not applicable or relevant to be in consideration of noise. So noise is not an influence in determining actual posted speeds for roadways. We look at the classification of the roadway, geometry of the roadway, conflict points, the overall cross section, is there parking, is there active users, is there conflict points and whatnot? And those are the Canadian guidelines that we applied citywide and in terms of Villeneuve Road specifically. It it kind of just, you know, even how it's posted today aligns with all of those guidelines. So the reduction to forty kilometers per hour is at the conflict points, the roundabouts of the intersection where we have active users. We have the intersection treatments which are roundabouts, so the conflict vehicles. And then the cross sections between the intersections are straight segments and no conflict points. And so it's got straight face curb, it's separated sidewalk or trail for the off the north side of Villeneuve for active users. There's street lighting. It's completely urbanized. And so in these non-conflict points, posted speed of sixty kilometers per hour with the intent that design speeds of a roadway typically allow for some contingency in the safety factor in regards to the posted speed. So a posted speed is is below a design speed typically, which again throws in that design safety factor. And in these cases, it's okay, it's it's not really, you know, there is no factor of noise necessarily. Now those
I wasn't
oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, sorry, Dean. I appreciate your in depth kind of response, but I was more thinking not dropping it to forty, but doing it in a stage like you've already identified hundred seventy sixty. Why not fifty for that length that's that you've just described, not sixty?
So the reason typically is is because drivers, despite the credit that I may give them on certain times of day, they're pretty astute to the surroundings and how the roadway can or could be driven safely. And so the design speeds applicable and the posted speeds being applied should be relevant and in line with what a driver should expect for the roadway. So arbitrarily changing a speed limit without the influence of redesign or or adjusting the factors that it may influence a driver's behavior really pushes that emphasis on then enforcement, for one, I would say. Because the drivers don't necessarily see it as a viable posted speed if we go through and reduce. And this is, I'll give the example for committee members where even when we went through and despite the roadways of our neighborhoods being recommended following Canadian practice for reduction of speeds to forty kilometers per hour. You know, a lot of creatures of habit in our past of having max fifty in neighborhoods push the emphasis to get compliance better when we apply traffic calming. So what I'm saying is when we redesigned the roadway to actually accommodate, maybe induce or influence drivers to reduce their speeds, it had an impact that speeds were reduced. Whereas in this case, on a straight segment of road with no conflicts and no visible tangible difference for a driver to make that change, it's pretty difficult to expect compliance. And that would, I mean, the result would be largely with with enforcement then to try and manage that.
Remember Sturgeon Road was recommended?
Yeah, I know. And and I'm just thinking, what's Dawson?
We moved Dawson.
Dawson is sixty kilometers per hour. So Dawson is an example of a connector roadway that we increased, but it was contingent on improvements to pedestrian crossings at the time. So the speed wasn't changed until pedestrian crossings were improved.
So your recommendation is based, I mean, there's no further traffic study or no further studies that you would recommend at this particular time based on I mean, obviously, use use is increasing dramatically as identified by the population changes and also the new developments. I mean, we've just like basically put a brand new pavement, brand new curbs, brand new sidewalks on both sides. So any any other suggestions that we can provide, Carl?
So at this time, I believe that I can be corrected, but I believe the issue, the concern is is noise. I know that safety is being discussed and I'll be, you know, safety is a priority for the transportation group, the city as a whole, of course, and this council has has really pushed and improved safety throughout the network and and our her in a lot of different ways. However, I think if we're looking to influence noise, then that's the targeted area that I'd like to focus on versus, you know, a secondary area that that may not result in the actual desired outcomes. So in, after talking with Carl, I appreciate his time. He's very open to sharing information in the last week. And so what I've suggested is in in the past, the city has done noise studies throughout the city. And just for clarity, there's no area in the city that when we've done these studies have currently been recorded in higher than the current industry threshold of sixty-five decibels, which we take the twenty-four hour average of traffic noise and focus on that. And we went through the entire city. We did, as Carl noted, in the studies, Villeneuve was tested. However, at the time of the studies in twenty eighteen and the report came out in twenty nineteen, then we did a secondary in twenty-one, twenty-two. The the north side of Villeneuve wasn't developed, so we don't have data. So one thing I'd like to do is is kind of be a little bit evidence based. So I'm suggesting, and if Carl's supportive, I'm happy to try and set up and schedule an actual noise study so we can get the level of noise, confirm what that level is. If it exceeds current tolerances, then we ultimately kind of would to to respond. But without that data, without that, I can't really sit and say what what action would be recommended at this time. So without being said, I'm suggested that the one influence, though, in in terms of the time, is simply that I'd like to see it at its worst. And so when the data is collected, it'd be ideal if Villeneuve Road was open fully. Right now, we finished the intersection in phase two work, but we have the west side of Hogan Road closed, so we allow that time open. It's anticipated to be opening mid-October. And so there could be a window that we can collect data before the season changes. Worst case scenario, unfortunately, is just so I don't over promise and under deliver would be data could be collected in spring twenty twenty-six and then and then go from there. And then with that as well, I don't have the actual speeds updated or anything like that. So again, falling back to data and collecting some speeds and volumes on on Villeneuve Road, using that just as to find out, you know, what are what are what are the speeds that people are operating at today? Use that information to help municipal enforcement, RCMP with their resource allocation to help any enforcement in that area and be as effective and efficient as possible. And then go from there.
Thanks.
Those two areas would be my immediate respects.
No, thanks, Dean. I appreciate that.
Is is there, I I did a quick Google search, but you're going to be the expert. I'm going to ask. Is the reduction in speed really going to reduce the noise? So my Google search really quickly, I've got a chart in front of me that a heavy truck at forty kilometers an hour is going to make eighty-three decibels, and it's sixty is eighty-seven. We're talking four decibels. So I remember when we put the stop sign in by the citadel, that three-way stop, remember in Iron Ridge? The residents actually complained that because the the cars are stopping and then it's the acceleration that causes the noise, not what, once they reach speed, is the noise kind of lessened and it's the changing of speeds and
It definitely has an influence. So ultimately, traffic noise is influenced by three key factors. It's there's the tire noise on the roadway, and then there's engine noises, and then there's the you know, basic in the high speed areas, you may get the wind resistance and the and the sound from vehicles.
Okay.
And so those those three key areas now. So in terms of a stop-start, that's where you'll get the engines likely revving. So the louder, we I don't think there's an arterial in this city that through the years, we don't annually get concerns of traffic noise come the spring summer season when we get the motorcycles, louder vehicles. And so we get, and I don't, and and out of fairness, we're not unique. Every city that I've talked to any peers on enforcement or in engineering, similar complaints around traffic noise. Some municipalities are trying to reduce the overall tolerance levels, and that's one thing I guess I can share with council in terms of another action that's in in the works is that we're investigating our current noise policy. I don't think this is going to be a decision we won't be presenting to this council, but in the next twenty twenty-six is when I suspect administration will come with potential changes or updates to a policy related to noise. How that looks in terms of retrofitting and new development, maybe two different discussions, but to say that and go back, I deviated from the question is, would a noise, I'm sorry, would our speed reduction reduce the noise levels? It could influence it, but the tangible difference, if you have, you know, loud vehicles and and whatnot traveling at these people, at the speeds that we're talking about, you know, adjusting to within reason, I don't know if it would be a tangible, noticeable, like significant difference in terms of what may be desired. The outcome desired might not actually be delivered.
And ultimately, long term, Ray Given gets extended, Fowler gets built, and we're pushing traffic off of Villeneuve, correct? I don't know. Would that explain to you, Carl?
Correct, but not until six thousand people move into the neighborhood and say.
I know it's the long term plan. That's why I'm, yeah, for sure. Because that was, I remember, the the goal of Fowler Way is to really make Villeneuve a very slow moving, not not your preferred option route because it's quicker to go down. Okay.
And when, what, if I may, with when that changes, recognizing that's long term, not not a short term or even moderate. But, you know, there'll be a redesignation of Villeneuve as well, but right now it's it's highway six thirty-three connecting to highway two. So it's a large load route. It's a dangerous good. So we have these influences of operation and functionality that will change in the wholeness of time. So not only volumes, but the classification of the So not only volumes, but the classification of vehicles coming down and and trucks, you know, typically are big. Influence to traffic noise.
Yeah.
So Carl, oh, cool.
Uh just to Carl, I live on a very, very busy street in Saint Albert, and I have, you know, thirty-some years of data to back that up. And this year it was closed for construction, it was wonderful, I thought, oh, this is so quiet, you know? I don't know what I've been missing kind of thing, but anyhow, our street was put down to the forty kilometers and. I don't find that it, you know, when we did the transition throughout the city, it didn't change the the noise or the speeding. It's still the motorcycles in the summer, the amount of traffic at traffic time when people are coming and going from work. And it didn't, the forty didn't change that noise level at all. And sometimes it even made it worse, because people are slowing down and starting and slowing down and starting, so. I just probably would like to see a little bit more data on the noise rather than the speed limit, because uh you know, we don't love a fix for that.
More EVs, or they're quiet.
That whiny noise.
That's the tired.
The whiny noise is from drivers.
Just to close, so I know you got other things. Um if you wanna conduct your own qualitative study, that's my email, feel free to um drop by my house between five and six AM. Up to midnight, because that's about the times we get to sleep. So does it make a difference? It did make a difference when the peace officers were doing traffic enforcement, because you bet people slow down when they have to get a ticket. And it increases um their demerits and it increases their insurance. Yeah, police officers always make. Right, and so does the change in traffic speed, so.
Councilor, go ahead.
Yeah, Carl, I appreciate you coming here and and your presentation, well, well thought out, and certainly. Ojit and how you presented your argument. My property doesn't back on to Villeneuve Road, but I'm close enough to understand what you're talking about. And heavy truck traffic and uh and screaming motorcycles. They're very irritating, particularly when you're trying to go to sleep. And so. Try and figure it out when we're, we'll do some studies.
Yeah, I think the takeaway is, any member of council can make a motion to amend the. Yeah, that's like bylaw, whichever one that is, to change the speed limit, or we could um. Pursue and maybe it's a conversation with Bill and Dean to do this. Uh new noise study along Villeneuve now that there's people living on the north side of it, maybe right in your backyard. Mister Furman, you can put in those kind of things, so I think. My opinion is to work on that, get the right data, but any member of council can make a motion if they want.
Just, then the policing committees has identified traffic safe, traffic enforcement as one of priorities for the RCMP and peace officers, and. I know that's a little. Um but I know that that is a priority, and if you look at our traffic numbers, they are increasing, um. But you're right, it it's tied to enforcement, and the more enforcement we can do on those major routes, the better. Hopefully it'll be in the long run, but yeah, it's it's not a.
Hearing so significant bombing with the reduction down to thirty inside the neighborhoods. And reductions in roads in other areas, so it has actually made a difference, you could study a similar city to yours.
Yeah.
That's inside the neighborhood.
Yeah, don't always make the residents happy, because they like the speed, but. It does make a difference in safety, right?
Okay, I think we have. And welcome to Saint Albert.
Yeah, and if you're not busy enough on committees, we do have committees that you can actually, come on.
All right, we do have another registered speaker, it's Brett Bolcov. How you say it? No, you said something uh.
I appreciate. That I can make that, outside my skill level. Yeah, I got it.
Five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm just gonna get my uh presentation set up before we start.
We'll start the timer once you.
All right, thank you very much for having me here today, I appreciate the opportunity sincerely. My grandparents moved to what was the new town of Saint Albert seventy years ago, uh and our family's been here ever since, including me. My grandfather was a volunteer firefighter, and my grandmother walked me down to call Father Jan every day for school. I love this city, and a big part of that is because of its natural beauty. But unfortunately, in May, right by Lewis Hall Centennial Provincial Park, the White Spruce Forest and the beautiful Sturgeon River Valley. I saw back what was a shoreline choked with garbage. Alongside all kinds of birds would recently migrated thousands of miles back to Saint Albert, busy trying to build their nests among this garbage. I reported it to the city back then. I could not have imagined that four months hence, I would be here talking to you about all of the lumber, plastic, styrofoam. Cardboard and insulation that still remains in this particular wetland. There are still, in fact, over a hundred pieces still in there. Now. The even more unfortunate part is that I've discovered that this is not an isolated issue. Visitors to our White Spruce Forest, as well as visitors to our White Spruce Forest have to contend with with big full-size pieces of insulation, multiple of them. That have blown in from the Riverside Development. Big pieces of plastics. And anyone who's walking their dog in Aaron Ridge North has to see these big pieces of plastic that are in the, either in the water or around the wet. Now, I see, I feel like Saint Albert's construction waste problem is so bad, in fact, that you can see it from space. Historic Google Maps imagery has archived all the construction garbage blown around fences and piled in the yards under homes of homes under construction. As well as all of it that's blown into water or natural areas. All these big white blobs look suspiciously like just what's in the backyards of those homes. Now, the garbage in Riverside has persisted for months and months, despite days and days of effort from multiple city departments. Including Public Works, the administration tells me spent multiple days in the summer cleaning up a mess that multimillion-dollar builders left behind. So this, of course, to me begs the question, why are we spending so many public dollars cleaning up a private mess? If you can profit from the build, you can and should be able to clean it up yourself. I appealed to the Riverside rep developer directly, and they are initially non-responsive to multiple emails. The garbage continued to pour in month after month. After I reached out to the national office, the local office finally responded. To this day, I'm still unfair what cleanup Gen Star undertook, if any, although we do know that Public Works spent multiple days doing so. I still see the same garbage in the same spots ever since the city did initial cleanup in July. Regardless, despite acknowledging that Gen Star was aware of the garbage and the directive from engineering to clean it up. The developer indicated that they considered the matter closed and would not be undertaking any further cleanup. All of council and myself are on the email thread to this effect that we received from Gen Star. Now, I don't think I need to dwell for too long on why construction waste is harmful to water, wildlife and people. But for good measure, here's the CTV story with Screen Grab of the executive director of Wild North demonstrating what happens to birds that end up. Tangled in construction waste. In case it's not clear, he's talking about birds that come into the rescue with construction garbage wrapped around their neck. Now, I have a hunch that construction sites that look like this, this is just from yesterday in Riverside, and it's been there for weeks. Have a good, have a good amount to do with why we see all this garbage in our natural areas. If your neighbor was renovating, would you be okay if their property looked like this? This is everyday life for people like Carl, who have just moved into their brand-new home in Saint Albert. There are multiple bins on this street that look just like this. The good news is, however, that we don't have to throw our hands up and say, what do we do? The policy tools already exist to prevent this, just in other cities. We simply need to bring ourselves up to the baseline that many neighboring municipalities have already set when it comes to rules around loose garbage, covered dumpsters. When to empty them, et cetera. Let's stop mopping and instead fix the leak, because our parks are not job site dumpsters. I'm asking council to ask administration for policy options for the city to consider to hold developers and builders. To the standard that residents of our botanical city, botanical art city expect. There's a groundswell of residents that are demanding change, this issue requires leadership from the top. And the legacy of this council can be one that sets us on a path that keeps our botanical art city beautiful. Protects water and wildlife, keeps kids safe, ensures residents like Carl stay happy with their decision to live here. And saves taxpayers a ton of money in the process.
Well, okay, um, thank you, honestly, very excellent presentation, great pictures, and I can't believe that was from yesterday. Because we've been um popping on a few emails from Gen Star, like, like. Back and forth between you and and Gen Star, and I honestly thought this was getting taken care of, but more than anything. I love the fact that you actually have uh suggestions, so if you don't mind, because I didn't get to them. Um I'm gonna just sort of adjust my city managers, I don't think this is a council policy, this sounds like an admin policy, but. A Strathcona and Stony Plain require dumpsters designated to prevent materials from blowing off. Spruce Grove requires those dumpsters to be emptied when they reach eighty percent full. Uh required building, so in Strathcona, Mournville, Beaumont, Laduke, Edmonton and Spruce Grove. Require building materials to be stored on-site in an orderly way to prevent them from blowing away, uh prevent accumulation of loose materials, those Edmonton, Mournville, Laduke, Beaumont, Stony Plain. Uh so there's some options here, obviously. Okay, okay, so I just feel like um. And I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do we have similar admin policies here?
Um there's admin policies, there's community standards bylaw, there's some engineering standards components of it, I know uh we've got the the team available and I would.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, so uh it's Donny George, right, from an engineering perspective, we also have environments, uh public operations and enforcement. That, so, Donny, could I ask you maybe to come forward and talk a little bit in in particular about sort of the the project management component and where that sits? Um and where potentially we've got some uh some areas that we can improve. And Donny may just quarterback this to somebody else, but we've got the team assembled.
Okay, I'll let you direct as you see.
Had contacts from the presenter over the past few months about the debris conditions and. Have pictures sent out as well, so based on the response that we've taken today. Uh we've engaged with the developer, obviously, through the development and hearing team, address the debris issue that I found out. You know, make sure that there's reasonable planning aspect in the development area. One thing we cannot do is enforcement anything on the private side, except to the community standards bylaw. Which then passed on to our enforcement, to take care of any debris conditions that's arising from our private property. I E builders. Regarding the storm pond, uh we've already cleared what was there multiple times through the public operations. We've been formed through uh developer Gen Star as well, multiple times to take care of the debris. That's how far we have taken care of uh in terms of addressing the debris issue at present. Within the community standards. And regarding enforcement, I'll pass on to Erin how far it's been successful to date.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit about the enforcement side, um. Uh we we do have a number of active investigations. Uh for some friendliness of construction sites underway right now. To date, we haven't found any violations, but I can't speak to the active investigations, but I can tell you earlier on in the year, when some of the initial. Concerns came in about this, there was some proactive work that was done on that. The community standards bylaw, there certainly is some options, as the speaker has has talked about, there is some options to. To increase some of the the strength of the wording in there and some of the details within that. Uh if council uh found that to be, you know, a priority to to move forward with, it would make enforcement a little bit easier, right now. In terms of the community standards bylaw, there is, you know, still have a subjective determination that has to be made in terms of, is this excessive, is this an amount? That will be past a a normal threshold um to to provide, you know, an enforcement uh or a ticket for. I I somewhat chalk it up to fifty-one in the fifties zone, right? There's not a lot of, like, if tickets for doing fifty-one in the fifties zone, even though it's technically illegal, um but we do have to. To look at each site case by case, and then determine whether or not that is unreasonable, given the circumstances. And and how much debris is on there, so.
So you're saying, go ahead, go.
No, I was just gonna say, right, and so, you know, that that's kind of where it sits, I think, um. You know, I. Heard of the team, but a look at some of the suggestions as it relates to, all right, you know, when you are issued your permitting to allow you to go in. What are the expectations? Those those exist broadly, um some specifics as it relates to, to use the examples that were given, mandating. Uh covered dumpsters, right, uh you know, those types of things, I think we can absolutely look at a review and see where there's there's room to approve. Uh we'd have to come back if it was community standards issue or related to an enforcement issue, we talk about fines and those types of things, that's clearly council purview that would come in with the recommendation. There may be some things that are administrative, however, that we could codify. I think we'd have to do honestly a little bit of homework, uh this George, I don't think I've been doing.
Ken has been teasing me that I'm, I should be making a bunch of motions right before I leave uh my chair. And the only one I was thinking of was the community standards bylaw. I'm looking at it right now, two thousand and ten it was written with only two amendments. And the last one in nineteen, so Erin, are you saying there's some improvements we could make to the community standards bylaw? That would address some of this?
Absolutely, if there if there were. Could strengthen the construction site. Right now, it's for all properties, not just construction sites, so.
Differentiate that.
So so there is some opportunities to make that a little bit clearer and speak to sense and. Increase restrictions and provisions in there. I think that would have to be, you know, we'd have to have some really good conversation with the the con- construction and development industry as well, because. One, one of the things I have heard in the past in terms of availability of dumpsters and. And the speed in which you construct, there's that, there's a balance, I I I think on some of it. Um but certainly, when it comes to loose debris, and this is, I think, what we're talking about.
It's pretty hard to give a ticket when the debris's in the pond already, because you don't know where it came from.
Exactly, and and I think, you know, one of the. One of the images that the presenter uh showed was was, obviously, they had a lot of uh wood and things like that, but we know the wood's not gonna blow away. But we know insulation and plastic and other material is, so. So certainly, we could have some clarity in the provisions to to strengthen some of that, if that's something council wants to do. There there is obviously another side of that, which then becomes. Similar to the previous presenter, you can make the rule, you can put the sign up, you can do all those things, and then it's the reality of. The resources, uh the time and effort towards the enforcement aspect of our life.
Any questions? Do I need to join up to that?
But a lot to the bylaw, but in addition, there's some mention about the equal plan.
Yeah.
Get it, boy, we typically employ that for city projects. We hadn't been able to step off a developer project, so that's something that we have looked into. In the past, and we have been facilitated in possibly in that direction, that's one of the recommendations that we can look at, provided we have resources. And with that, so Melissa is online, maybe she can turn a little bit more light around the equal plan and helping manage our storm pond areas.
Y- yeah, sorry, uh uh but uh to to council members, like if um, I think maybe back to Mr. Fletcher's point, like. Um the the first step might be, um if council wanted to go this way, is to submit an information request. Because there's probably a blend of policies that are at the governance council level and administrative uh practices and standards, but. That would have a resource implication, and I think for us to sort of fully understand that, like. We would include that as part of the information request, and then that would serve to inform. Um sort of what those, what the most appropriate sort of policy levers would be for for council's consideration.
But when um when you were compiling your um kind of other communities and municipalities that have this. Did you visit any of those scenarios, like around Spruce Grove with all of their construction, have you seen? I mean, I mean, I'm just trying to just follow the line, you know, it's nice if you have a policy, but it's always. Who enforces it, how it's enforced and all that. Did you, did, were you able to get out to some of these communities and look to see if they actually had an impact? Because the same builders are in there, a lot of the same builders are in the same communities.
Yeah, no, I have not, I've been just traveling around Saint Howard, kinda uh compiled the information on this, actually, I've not been able to travel to other municipalities to. Check out what what it looks like there.
Did you see waste outside of Riverside?
What's that?
Did you see the si- same waste in other areas?
Iron Ridge. Oh, yeah, for sure, like, Mivo, Mivo was the same story, Aaron Ridge North, same.
One for one developer.
No, I I don't either, but I, that's, but that's why I was asking, a lot of these builders who are, like, it's not even a developer so much, it's builders. And 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 I realize developers are involved too, but I mean, the builders are in multiple communities around Edmonton, and so if they're already abiding by. One um kind of, kind of community standard in there, I mean, it shouldn't be hard for them to just continue to that.
Yeah.
But I might, might, and and where maybe this goes to the information request administration suggesting. They provide that background material to see how that is working in other communities as well, so that we get a little bit bigger picture, just not a. I think I'm I'm, I'd I'd be curious to see if. That if uh Spruce Grove has the same issues around their stormwater ponds and some of their construction sites, even though they do have more of a rigorous policies.
Yeah, I could imagine that if you, if you are requiring a covered bin in Spruce Grove, that you. Yeah, I could imagine that if you, if you are requiring a covered bin in Spruce Grove, that you could get a covered bin here as well, right? That makes sense, but if I, if I may, just comment on the community standards by law thesis, that acceptable?
Yeah, absolutely.
So just, just for context in terms of like how that, how that actually plays out in practice. Is that, you know, in, in all my conversations with municipal enforcement over these many months, uh, you know, they, they tell me that. That if, in effect, the community standards by law is not designed for construction sites and that they don't effectively, they don't use it. The language in there to police construction sites. And so there's a disconnect between what the bylaw says and, you know, things in the bylaw about accumulation of refuse. And turns out that, you know, they don't enforce this on active construction sites. Because they said the, the file was not designed for construction sites. Even though some of the provisions in there would potentially block, but I think overall we just need better. Better policy and enforcement, both at the staff level, you know, in terms of development permits, as well as specific rules in terms of bylaws, right?
Or Wes has a question, bro.
Yeah, I just sort of a comment, uh, but I certainly appreciate your, uh, your diligence in this and I'm looking forward to. Proposed amendments and the work done by administration to sort of strengthen, um, you know, our bylaws. I. Thank you for the pictures. Pictures speak a thousand words, uh. But I, I just want to bring, uh, everybody's attention to the, uh. The event on September twentieth where it's clean and green. And I've done that before and, and, uh. We have a real heart for the community or for the environment in our community. Uh, but it is a revelation when you go down there, uh, to try and clean up what's on the river. It's not only, uh, builders. Um, there are other things there too. And so the message that you're making. Should be heard by everybody in the community, not just the builders and the developers. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, I, I understand. I've never been, I've never been in other areas of the city where I see a coffee cup and things like that that are so big. Uh, I mean, you saw the, you saw the image in the St. Albert Gazette, right? There's, there's, nobody is leaving this on a trail somewhere, right? This is a unique.
They're off the trail in the bush, quite honestly. I would suggest you go look. Because you'd be surprised what I found in the back and threw it in the.
The coffee cups and stuff, yeah.
Coffee cups was the wor- least of the worries. Thank you very much.
Any question? Go ahead. Um, thank you.
I've been hearing complaints from not only me, but other residents as well, who are living near reconstruction this summer. And are having challenges with the amount of debris on the roads, the amount of mud that's accumulated on the roads. Complaints of this nature. Um. I hear administration's recommendation for an information request. Um, Mayor, I'm gonna let you have the data to decide if you want to do this motion. If you don't, I will be bringing it forward.
Yeah, I'm, I, there's a couple parts of the whole bylaw I want to touch.
Uh, yeah, it's not just a community thing, but we, like, I would like to. Move this forward on the agenda and not wait for an information request or delay it. I want. In my opinion, we should debate this next week. Like, this, this is an urgent decision to make and then tell them to make it and come forward with this policy is honestly where I'd love to go. But if nothing else, I'd like to have this brought forward as a motion. So if you don't do it, just a heads up.
And you're gonna waive notice?
Whatever it takes, yeah. Like, and if you guys don't waive it, we can discuss it in November, but I, I would, or you can break forth for it. But the point is, you don't do it, I will, so I will wait for you because you mentioned it.
Okay. Already debating my. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for presenting today. Just for enforcement, a question, the, uh, the bins, like, this saddens me to see this. Because it's common sense, your bin's full, empty it, right? Or, and I mean, a lot of them aren't going to have covers on them. Do some of the developers like tarp them before they're picked up or anything like that? It's if, if we. You know, put in the bylaw, it has to be covered. Is there a means of that? Because with the winds we have lately. You know, they really should all be covered at the end of the day.
Everyone needs to.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I can speak to my own experience with that is that, you know, there were very, there were very few to no covered bins within the city. When I first saw this issue and then after, you know, uh, raising it with, with both the builder directly and the developer. Uh, on, you know, just the end of the, uh, area where this was directly adjacent to the wetland. There are bins with a actual like solid cover on them, right? Um. So you can procure a bin that has a plastic cover on the top. And it, uh, you know, it's questionable on whether it is actually covered up, you know, at the end of the day or not. And then just the same thing happens where there's, everything is flowing out of the bin because it's now overflowing, you can't even close the lid, right? So that's, you know, an ongoing issue, which perhaps an eighty percent limit might mitigate, right? But, uh, in other areas, the bin is typically not tarped. It's, uh, sometimes something that's very flimsy like you saw there. And, uh, you know, there's really no covering of any bins unless it is a bin that has an actual physical lid on it.
Any more questions? Either Brett or staff? Okay, thank you for coming. Um. Honestly, I, I saw the CTV, I saw that, I've seen emails that your advocacy is commendable.
Thank you very much.
Tireless, obviously. Okay. We are onto the approval of the minutes from July. Anyone want to make that motion? And since we need omissions, errors?
Yep, I can't remember that.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, the standing committee of the whole minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented.
The vote. That is unanimous. All right, Aaron, don't go anywhere because five point two is photo enforcement update and options.
Amazing, we don't have this address.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
The back row. Just needed another minute to get this all. Yeah, whatever you're ready, Aaron, no rush. That gives Aaron a breath, some breathing room. Okay, you ready?
Okay.
Wait, Natalie with us?
Yeah.
We are all ready and all here.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. So afternoon, everyone, or good morning, I should say. Um, for those who are watching online, my name is Aaron Eastbrook. I'm the manager of policing services. And here today with Gernot Melik, our peace officer program supervisor, to present on the topic of photo enforcement. So it's not uncommon that anytime we hear those words, photo enforcement or automated enforcement, people often go to cash cow and fine revenue. Uh, in their minds. Prior to getting into the presentation, I would like to reiterate that city administration and our enforcement and transportation branches within. Do not and have not deployed this program in a fashion to increase revenues. It's important for me to share this, uh, as we go through today's presentation. Um, so that it is understood that we use and view this as a traffic safety enforcement tool. Just like our more traditional speed detection devices and deployment methods. With that being said, in today's presentation, I'll touch a little bit on the purpose of why we're here. I'll provide a bit of history and, uh, background on the program. Present some key, uh, program statistics, provide a summary on the new provincial guidelines. Briefly go through some of the service delivery options that we reviewed and then provide you with administration's recommendation. There will of course be opportunities for questions. However, if you have anything, any questions while I'm on the slide, just feel free to interrupt. So the purpose of today's presentation is to provide the committee with information on the status of photo enforcement in St. Albert, uh, and Alberta and to seek direction. Uh, on where council would like to go in the future, given this new context and environment that we are in. So just for a little bit of historical background, photo enforcement was introduced in St. Albert in two thousand and one with two red light cameras and two mobile units. Speed on green was added in two thousand and eight. By two thousand and twelve, a third red light camera and can cameras were added. Uh, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, the government of Alberta conducted a comprehensive review on enforcement. During that review, they had restricted the installation of new equipment and new zones. At the end of their review, they introduced more restrictive guidelines that were phased in over a couple of years, uh, up to twenty twenty-three. Uh, during that period, St. Albert reduced the service contract hours down to approximate sixty hun- uh, sixty-eight hundred hours. Uh, of enforcement per year, which was about half of what it was pre-two thousand and twenty-one. In November of two thousand and twenty-three, as St. Albert's service contract was coming to an end, uh, many of you will remember that, uh, we went to council. To review the photo enforcement program. That review, uh, was completed and council provided direction to continue on with the program in a status quo fashion. In May of two thousand and twenty-four, a five, a new five-year contract was signed with Global, uh, Traffic Group following a competitive bid process after that direction from council. Approximately six months later in December of two thousand and twenty-four. The government of Alberta made formal announcements, uh, on the reduction of the photo enforcement use in Alberta. Uh, May twenty twenty-five, the city and global agreed to a temporary contract with reduced, with a reduced scope. To ensure compliance with the new guidelines. Uh, until longer term decisions on program future can be made. This is a temporary contract and due to expire in April, or sorry, in October. In the next few slides, I'll go through, uh, over four key statistics, uh, should give you a little bit of a sense of the program outcomes. This first graph depicts the total number of photo enforcement tickets issued by year from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-four. Couple of the key trends are that there's been, uh, about a two hundred and thirty-six percent decrease in tickets issued over this period of time. Most tickets and offenses observed were in the mobile enforcement category. Relatively few offenses observed in red light and speed on green categories, especially in the last couple of years. Uh, this next graph depicts the total percentage of vehicles that were observed speeding beyond the set threshold in the system. In two thousand and one, when the program started, St. Albert's rate of speeding vehicles was three point three percent. Twenty-three years later, it's, uh, down to point nine three percent. Statistically represents a seventy-two, uh, percent decrease. So although photo enforcement is not the only factor, um, that contributes to collision rates and severity or. That helps offset collision rates and severity. Felt it was important to show this trend because the, that's, the, the program is, is, is one of many pieces and tools that we use to try to bring the collision rates down. Since two thousand and seventeen, you'll see that the total number of collisions has dropped by thirty percent. Injury collisions are down sixteen percent and non-injury collisions are down thirty-four percent. Now, at the beginning of my presentation, you heard me talk about the negative perceptions of photo enforcement related to fine revenue. Uh, because of the nature of traffic enforcement is rooted in the consequence of paying a fine in an attempt to change someone's behavior. Revenue is an inevitable outcome. We also know that when providing services to our residents, we want to do so at a cost-effective and efficient manner and truly stand behind our fiscal responsibility principles. That being said, uh, it was important to show you the fine revenue and expense trending for the last few years of this program. I think it also helps demonstrate to the community that there's really not a lot of net positive revenue that has been realized in the last few years. And we continue to see a decreasing trend. In two thousand and twenty-four, the city received approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in fine revenue from this program. After program expenses, the total re- net revenue was. After program expenses, the total net revenue was around three hundred and twenty thousand. It's also important to note that overall, we've estimated the city spent about five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in traffic and transportation safety initiatives. Which exceeds the amount of net revenue that has come in from this program.
Where are you? That, that three hundred and twenty-one thousand. By policy gets reinvested in traffic safety, correct?
So currently by policy, we do not. Right now where that money sits is. It flows to the bottom line of the emergency services department. So it offsets the costs arguably, you could look at it that way of the program. And tax implications for delivering of emergency services, placing services, RCP contract, peace officers. There is a policy that was in place around speed on green revenue where the fifty percent of those proceeds used to go into a traffic safety. On initiatives. That's since been changed because of the, the program has changed and that's no longer an option.
Okay. Okay.
But there are certainly options for council to consider moving forward, not part of today's presentation or recommendations. But there's opportunities moving forward that if council wanted to put a policy in place around proceeds of fine revenue. Going into some other fund rather than the bottom line of leasing, there, there, we could look at that with finance. There just may be some, or there, there will be tax implications. Right now, it's not operating dollars, right? It's going into reserves.
Yeah, but your second question, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars out of, what, what is the total budget for? Emergency services leasing, like it, right, it's.
Fourteen million?
It's, it's, it would be immaterial, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the policing branch alone is probably around seventeen million.
Yeah.
And obviously fire, not a hundred percent sure what the fire is, but it's going to be probably a little bit more than that. It's certainly north of that. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's again, to, to the perception of cash cow, it's, it, it's a. I won't say a drop in the bucket, but it, it's pretty close to that in terms of net revenue to, to the overall. Department, let alone city budget. Yeah. Okay.
But if, if, but again, just to reiterate what, what Aaron said, it's well taken. And while it's not necessarily mandated by policy. Practically that money is reinvested in public safety as it relates to the emergency service. It's not used as.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So with all that history and stats out of the way, I'll move on to a brief summary of what has caused us to be in front of council today. As mentioned earlier, the government of Alberta has made significant changes to the photo enforcement program. Photo enforcement is now only permitted in school, playground and construction zones. Intersection safety devices are restricted to red light cameras only. The speed on green technology is now prohibited. Photo enforcement technology cannot be used on provincial highways or connector roadways. St. Albert Trail is considered a connector roadway, so it is prohibited on St. Albert Trail. The government has allowed, however, the municipalities to make an application to use photo enforcement technology. In all areas that would otherwise be prohibited. If the municipality can do a business case and can demonstrate that there's a high frequency of collisions. And other traffic calming and safety methods have been ineffective. So this is a very high threshold. The government has, you may have recently heard in the news, I believe, the city of Calgary made an application and was able to use. Some speed on green technology in an area or some photo enforcement technology in area that was normally prohibited. Cause they were able to make the case. It usually has to be double the rate of collisions than any other comparable. Comparative areas or fifty collisions or more in a single area. So it's, it's a very high threshold.
Yeah, just this clarification and the, the one site that we always counsel heard a lot about was. By the niche uphill on St. Albert Trail. That site is now prohibited. And even, even though statistically it was catching a lot of people doing some pretty crazy speeds there. We, we're no longer able to enforce that. Thank you.
So this, this map, as I show this map, I want to give full credit to the St. Albert Gazette. As they were the ones that originally published this late last year when the government announced the changes. I made a few small modifications to it just to show. That the intersection safety devices now show as banned. Originally, we had them as they were showing as yellow because we weren't sure if St. Albert Trail was considered a connector or provincial highway. That has since been, been sort of out. In any event, I just felt that this was a really good. Image just to show how many sites were removed as a result of changes. There's also a few sites that we have added, school zones and a couple of construction zones. So. Just, you know, disclaimer, this isn't the actual today's approved list. This just gives you a sense of how much is removed and how much remained.
Are you going to have a map that shows the recommended, what the results of the recommendation are?
The results of the recommendation will actually be the same. So the recommendation, as I get into that, is to maintain. In the same areas and these are all playground zones and school zones that are listed. There's no other, and a couple of construction zones, right? There's no other zones that are permitted at this time.
Not changing anything?
Oh, we took away all the.
I know, it just says to move forward, option A.
Which is basically.
It's just status quo.
Right. I thought perhaps there's expansion because of that threshold thing, but no.
No.
I, I'll speak to that a little bit in the, in the, in the option. I see where you're going with that, yeah. So, so given this new reality and the environment surrounding photo enforcement, the administration conducted a review of options for council's consideration. The three options that were considered have been detailed in the report attached to your agenda package. Each option provides details on the pros and cons and should give you a good sense of what you could expect from each selection. So option A outlines the details to continue with providing photo enforcement to the extent possible. So in this option, the city would look to amend its current contract with the. So that mobile photo enforcement would occur between eight and twenty hours. Per week in school playground and playground zones. In addition, mobile enforcement would be considered to be provided on an as-needed and viable basis in construction zones. Red light enforcement would also be considered for deployment at intersections where approved. So not able to provide council or be able to, to say that. Right as of today, we can add intersection safety devices or. Construction zone in certain areas because that's going to be fluid depending on. The case-by-case review to find out, is it viable? Does it meet the threshold? Does it not meet the threshold? But in option A, the amendment to the contract allows for that dialogue with the contract and the service provider. So that if we find a site that is approved and should be used to bring down collisions, then we will have that ability to do so. Option B, we call the hybrid option. Essentially, this option provides some details around the possibility to increase the number of community peace officers. Peace officer FTEs in an effort to cover the proactive enforcement gap that photo enforcement has left behind. The options provided in the report speak to topping up enforcement hours with more officers. In a couple of different way, or a couple of different scenarios. But this can also be adjusted to meet council's desire if they would like to increase or decrease FTEs. So if council felt. They wanted to increase the number of peace officers by one or only two to help offset some of this. We could provide more information on what those costs could potentially look like. Option C is just a simple removal of the, the program kind of, you know, full stop. So in the end, after considering all the factors, administration is recommending to move forward with option A, and that's continuing to provide photo enforcement services to the extent possible. The key reasons for administration making this recommendation is because it continues to take advantage of the traffic safety tools that are available. So that enforcement can continue to have a most multifaceted approach to keeping our community streets safe. It provides administration with more time and understanding to impact the scope and reduction and if necessary. Or advisable to increase the peace officer FTEs to ensure that traffic safety does not degrade in our community. In the end, we just don't know what the impact of the photo enforcement reduction will have in St. Albert at this time. I think it's safe to say that reducing the total number of enforcement hours on our streets will not have a positive impact. But we're just, it's too early to know if it will actually. And to, you know, some of my earlier point, it's, it's just one tool, right? There's traffic calm, there's engineering standard, there's, there's weather. All these different factors influence and impact collisions. So at this time, it's, it's hard for administration to recommend to increasing staffing to cover this gap when we're just not sure what the actual outcome is going to be. And lastly, the estimated overall cost of the program will be minimum cost neutral for the mobile enforcement side of the program. Making continuation of the service and efficient and a fiscally responsible way of providing traffic enforcement.
The.
Go ahead, yeah.
Just says questions to that.
I'll ask questions.
The, you know, the current contract expires October thirty-first of this year. At some point. Supplier of that service has got to recognize that it might not be a profitable, no longer profitable to continue running. Without getting obviously into any strategies around just a one-year term, a two-year term if option A was particularly, was selected. Or is it like?
So currently we have a five-year contract in place. And if option A was selected by council, we would work with the service provider to amend the current contract for that same period of time.
Okay, so. Another five years then. Cause the current one expires October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, right?
So the, we've, the current term was from two thousand and twenty-four for an additional five years. We have made some amendments to reduce the number of services so that we could comply. So that temporary amendment expires in October. So what we would look to do is. Continue with the same time period, but adjust. Adjust the hours to reflect our new environment more formally.
I apologize if I missed a piece. Calgary's maintained some of it. Edmonton's maintained it only in construction and. School and playgrounds areas, or have they eliminated it entirely? Cause they, they removed the speed like which was, they're required at their red light cameras, but. So they're having at the current red light cameras and then. In a limited use in playground, school zones.
I, I'm not a hundred percent up to speed. I apologize on, on Edmonton's program. I do believe they had dropped school zones.
Yeah, I think they did. You're right.
I'm not sure if they dropped playground zones and I do know that they are still running some intersection safety devices for red lights. I suspect they're going to do something similar to Calgary in terms of some of their really high areas and make applications for.
The process to do that is used identified as quite.
Onerous.
Onerous and. And yeah, lots of roadblocks on that. Okay. That was just kind of the question I had.
Yeah.
Question there. So with, with our contract for. Mobile enforcement in schools and playgrounds. I, I have never heard from a resident that said they, they thought it was a cash cow to protect our kids in playgrounds or school zones. They may not like getting a ticket, but they, they have. The comment is if you don't like a ticket, don't speed in a school zone. And that is by far, you know, I, this, this cash cow thing kind of goes away in construction zones. School zones and playgrounds. So my question is, is. Could, could we, through the contract, actually, and is this allowed by the government, could we increase the frequency? Cause I, I, you know, I see a truck on Fogon Road by JJ Nearing, but I only see it. Once every two months because it has to move around everywhere else. Could we increase it to be there? You know. Every month for, for, for a week.
Yeah, great.
Through this contract.
Great question. The contract that we would look to set up would allow for us to have those conversations kind of ongoing. What I will say, it's a very, it's a, it's a negotiation with, with service provider because. And, and what cost are we willing to pay for that, right? So, so what I, in, in the current kind of. Informal quote that we got was, was that we are going to be able to provide this to the community at. Minimum cost neutral. Now, if, if there are going to be other costs or we're going to increase the amount of time in zones being spent. It's going to come at a cost for the contractor. We may have to pay on top of that. So if it starts to become a, an expense for the, for the municipality to provide these services. That now has a budget implication. So, so then we have to come back to council and have a conversation or increase our operating budget to pay, to pay for that.
I'll say, or my, my thinking is that we're making three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars net. And that we use that money to increase the frequency. Through our, our contractor and say, hey, we, we want instead of, I, I don't know what the number is, forty hours of. Mobile enforcement, we want sixty hours. And it comes out of that money, no, no impact.
So what I, what I can, just for some clarity, that, that three hundred and twenty thousand dollar number that I gave, that is. Two thousand and twenty-four numbers. The environment significantly changed. And that, and, and some of that fine revenue that has come in, has come in from. Two and three years of fine revenue in the past. Cause sometimes it takes a while for. Municipality only gets fine revenue when a ticket's actually paid. So there's, there's kind of a, a drag and a tail that comes after through the fine revenue. So I think. The fine revenue or the amount of revenue coming in as a result in the future is, is going to be different. Don't know exactly, is it going to be? Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. Is it going to actually come out of a cost? Well, it's not going to come out of a cost based on our. Our information right now. We just don't know to what degree is it zero, is it a hundred thousand? And, and I think. That, knowing that next year is going to be able to provide us some opportunity. To then see about increasing it in other areas.
Maybe you could just jump on, say, that's the point, right? It's, uh, cause you, point's well taken, right? I mean. Without getting into sort of the details, I think there, there is some flexibility built into the contract to allow. The team, right, to move. I guess that there's an element of notwithstanding historical context, right? With this new piece, again, this being one component of the traffic enforcement, right? Engineering standard for mention, right? Our, the more traditional sort of approach this next year would allow us to sort of define. Hey, is this the sweet spot or is, and if it isn't, I think we would, you know, again, the public safety being sort of the primary enterprise of all of this, right? We would come back and seek to, to make that difference. I think right now. Please, please correct me if I'm speaking out of school here, but you know, we believe this is the, the right mix, right? Based on kind of where things sit. But if that were to change in the data collection over the next year, we would certainly not sit on that. Is that a fair statement to garnet?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
You're, you're suggesting that without, that you could still increase the number of hours. I use JJ Nearing. As, as an example, that we, you, you have within the contract, the flexibility to say, hey, we want to. Increase the total number of hours that we contracted to get. Give better protection in, in those areas without council giving you directions, explicit direction to do so.
Correct. The contract, we would look at it, it's a minimum of X amount, not a maximum. So we have a minimum and then that ability to have that conversation. And it's also, you know. A conversation with the RCP and with our traffic safety planning, to Bill's point about. Where is the right placement of this? And is it contributing to that traffic safety plan and, and the larger outcomes of collision reduction?
And my, my comments are notwithstanding whether I may or may not have received a ticket from that particular photo radar enforcement site.
Good. I'm glad. Hey, what's the cost of a MES officer now? Have we, total cost all in? I know like for an RCP officer, about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, but for a MES officer is what?
One thing I didn't a hundred percent double check.
It doesn't have to be a, approximate.
We do have, we have this report.
Oh, do you really? I'm sorry. I know you have the nine hundred and ten, the big number of, for five. Is it simple as dividing nine hundred and ten by five?
So we are approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we are approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. That'll be for salary and benefits, and then each patrol vehicle is about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay.
And we would anticipate, depending on the duties of that officer. If it was a traffic duty, so if you had an officer trying to be alone, uh we would say about sixty two thousand dollars in fine revenue. Would come in to help offset some of those costs.
Yeah, okay.
When comparing it to the R C and P, I will just add a little bit of context, and if you look at that two hundred and forty thousand dollars for R C and P numbers. That includes.
The.
Oh, I I. So it's like administration, H R, it's all those things.
Fully loaded.
Look at these numbers for M E S, it it doesn't include that, that is just kind of the hard numbers, we don't account for the the rest of the the stuff that goes into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for asking this question.
Thank you, just have a question if the contractor would have freedom to uh place the, you know, the. Uh enforcement at specific areas that they have data that are problem areas rather than, or do they go through a cycle of where they're enforcing?
So they follow the direction that we provide them. So every site has to be approved, has to be approved by the city and specifically the R C and P, they they aren't able to just. Go out and place wherever they want, it's our contractor providing those services under our direction, so we would tell them. A lot to do that, and to do that.
Oh, so do you have data of, you know, problem areas kind of thing, and that's where you're sending them out? Is that how you direct it?
So so currently, right now, yeah, it's a it's a it's an ongoing conversation between us and the contractor, they. They do have, you know, the site of the day where we want to make sure that they hit all these different playground.
Right.
And school zones, uh if we start to see anomalies where we need to spend more time in one area or not another. Then that conversation occurs to kind of redeploy, so we give them some basic guidelines, if I mean, you can add to me if I'm if I'm misspeaking on this. Some basic guidelines, and then it's a it's a it's a monthly monthly conversation that you're having with the contractor and the R C and P.
Monthly meetings with us.
And are you still advertising those sites?
Yes, hundred percent, so we have a map online, it shows all the approved sites, um and a justification for for being there.
My questions.
Any more questions? Anyone want to make a motion? Wes, go ahead.
Sure.
I moved that the standing committee of the whole recommended counsel that administration move forward with option A. Continue full enforcement to the extent possible, as outlined in the report entitled Full Order Enforcement. Background and Service Delivery Options, September twenty twenty five, provided as an attachment to the agenda report dated September ninth twenty five.
Awesome, I'll accept that, any comments?
Thank you, uh we just uh received the presentation by uh. Mister Geisberg on the whole process of how this decision is being arrived at and the service that's going to be uh. Provided in St. Albert, it's in line with the provincial guidelines. And consistent with the uh service that we're currently experiencing, so. Carry on.
All right. Unfortunate, but did you have a comment? Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I I'd just like to say that uh. You know, this whole cash cow thing, uh as I as I said in comments that. When it comes to protecting the safety of our kids in playgrounds, uh school zones. Um, and our our construction workers in in dangerous. You know, active constru- construction sites, uh it it's. It's a a non-issue to, the only people that complain is they complain after they've got a ticket. But they only get a ticket because they're speeding. And uh everybody else is complying with those speed limits and they are happy that their kids. Are safe and it it's sad that we have to put up a sign that says, you know, my dad works in this construction and please don't speed. Um, that that has got to be the most obvious statement ever, and uh so continuing with. Photo enforcement and uh and. Hopefully having the opportunity to potentially expand it. Uh, is in critical areas is a is a good thing, and. Thank you for bringing this to uh to count to uh scow and hopefully the council as well.
Just a moment.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, it's all right. I lived this life for quite a long time, so I know the upsides of uh any type of enforcement tool, whether it's for safety or or even a force multiplier, but. I mean, right now, as you presented this, and in the background, there's a little downside in in this recommendation and and moving forward. I think it's worthwhile, though, looking at further opportunities, whether it's to uh. How do we supplement? And I think that's really the only option that's available to us, it's it's a more costly option, however. Um, you know, I think, or I believe that um. The hybrid was possibly a way we could go, but I I also believe that we just don't have the data at this particular time, and maybe one of the uh upcoming. Community uh reviews that are either going going forward or potentially going forward might give us the information that we need to actually create that hybrid. Which I think is most likely the obvious solution where we actually have. Um, uh. Auto enforcement, but also manned opportunities that can respond and aren't limited to the traffic regulations around photo enforcement, i.e. They can go into problem neighborhoods and enforce the forty kilo hour speed limit, which we can't do under photo enforcement, so. That's my comments, thanks, Sarah, I appreciate the information and the report.
Anything to close, Wes?
Uh, no matter, ma'am.
I'll call for your vote. That's unanimous. Hey, uh.
First I have a way.
Eleven twenty, let's try to get. The access to transit mobility services pilot project done, and then we'll have a lunch break, so as well.
Uh, actually. The team just needs a couple minutes here to get set up, I think, and uh Alex is going to do the introduction.
We'll take five minutes.
First private, so. Yeah, for free.
Okay. One's back.
Yeah. Same way.
So, um, boys.
We're just talking about old men things.
Gentlemen?
Talking about old men things.
Boys, so Will is not presenting. I don't look like, was he?
Will will be with us, but if we turn it over, Alex first, some introductory.
Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Okay.
Uh, good morning, the just wanted to do a brief introductory uh remarks to this particular uh initiative. The city of St. Albert's handy bus service is rooted in the fundamental goal of community inclusion. Ensuring that individuals with cognitive and physical disabilities have equitable access to essential services, employment and social connection. The pilot project that is being presented today responds to a very real gap in our current service. And represents a meaningful step towards reducing social isolation and increasing independence for the residents who face mobility barriers. I'll now turn it over to Mister Tim Saunders and the team to walk through the details of the pilot and how it supports our community goals.
Thank you, Alex, um like I'd mentioned, I also have Mister Will Stedler with us online, and he will be able to answer any of the technical questions that may arise today, but. We are here today in response to a council motion passed on July second twenty twenty five was to improve equitable. Access to mobility services in St. Albert. Administration prepare a financial analysis and implementation plan for a two-year pilot project utilizing a third-party contracted service. With the business case presented to council in Q three twenty twenty five, so we are here today. So as Alex had mentioned, uh St. Albert Transit's handy bus service is uh it was enacted around the. Start of St. Albert Transit in uh the eighties, nineties, it it seems that our recollection and any of the information we have is that. Handy bus was actually a service offering right from the earliest days of St. Albert Transit. It is a service designed to assist in meeting the mobility needs of residents sixteen years of age and older. Who cannot use conventional transit services due to physical or cognitive disability. We do provide door-to-door transportation services, it's an origin destination, uh there is not a the. Bus stop that is used, but our service actually provides the the clients a a service rate to and from their door with assistance of a rider from their doorstep. Twenty twenty four, we had six hundred and eighty-six registered clients and over thirty thousand trips provided. Our buses, we have seven of them that are city-owned buses and they are operated by our bus-operated contractor. Uh, they're twenty-five foot buses and. In twenty twenty, sorry, uh twenty twenty-four, over thirty thousand trips have been performed. However, there in twenty twenty-four, we had three prospective clients that were not able to provide the service because of. Some physical characteristics of the properties, either the origin or destination, and on most circumstances is related to the. Bus pickup or drop-off location, the parking lot is either too restrictive for the buses that we operate. Um, in order to operate safely, we must be able to get access to the door on the door-facing side of the bus. Uh, and an ability to be able to turn out without a. Uh, performing a thirty-point turn and being to have somebody that was able to look at the the reverse movement to the parking lot, so. We undertake a very robust uh registration process for our clients where we visit the locations of their origin or destination. To make sure that we are able to provide that service. Uh, in these very few circumstances where we are unable to provide service, we do offer them uh the opportunity to become handy bus clients for other origins or destinations that may be able to provide that service. But there is a gap that exists for some of the requested trips that they have. One of the solutions is that an alternate vehicle size is one mechanism that may be able to provide. These trips in uh in the cases where there is either restricted parking lots and or restricted access to the doorway of the facility. We did do some research with our uh with our partners Edmonton Transit Service and in particular Dats, which is their their paratransit uh uh branded offering. And they do have a contract service that they utilize with the third-party vendor. Using smaller vehicles, in this case, it is a a essentially a minivan that has been outfitted with uh wheelchair accessibility. Uh, with a with room for uh another rider to accompany. Um, so. What we found during the the last couple of months of our investigation is that. This is an offering that is being used successfully by our partner organizations. Um, part of the financial analysis, we did perform a market scan. Um, and we've come up with this pilot project initiative and talked a little bit about the funding request and what our implementation plan would look like. So we would look to utilize a third-party vendor with these smaller wheelchair wheelchair accessible vehicles when we can't use the city of St. Albert regular fleet. So in all cases, we would be looking to optimize the use of our regular fleet vehicles, and this would be only a supplement to our existing service offering for the cases where. That particular vehicle is not able to offer. Administration plans to use the pilot project to collect information related to the demand. And the expense related to the a pilot project to understand as the city grows. How we're going to be able to provide this service offering, which is in line with the service level that exists. Um, right now, we know of three in twenty twenty-four, but uh what we want to do is to be able to collect that data, understand the full demand. And be able to come back to council with uh funding requests in future, uh be able to provide this service. Either in this fashion or in something else that we may be uh more efficient at that time. So we assembled an estimate of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over two years, so twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, to fund this pilot project. Now. To protect the uh the the public procurement and the competitiveness of a procurement, I have not provided details, that is all available that we could have. Uh, an in-camera session, but I wanted to provide some of the rationale that how I came up with this a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what we did is we looked at what the market scan, the market scan gave us, what a per-trip cost would be. We multiplied that by the number of clients and the estimated number of trips that they were requesting based on the service that they had asked us to. To uh provide to them. What we've also provided in there is a contingency value for an uptick, because what we don't understand at this time is what the recreational. Trips will look like for these individuals, we've used in most cases their their known scheduled trips, whether it's to a workplace or otherwise, in order to assemble this this calculation. But we have concluded a contingency in there. But we have included a contingency in there for an uptick or a, a slight revision in demand. Additionally, we are planning to perform this pilot project with internal staffing. We've got a Handy Bus Coordinator right now that we feel that during the, the pilot project, we will be able to complete this based on the information known to us. However, if demand increases, we want to protect the ability to perform this work. So I have included within that contingency a value of using casual wages in order to supplement that on an as-required basis. But to be clear, this service would be provided on a per-trip basis and the request would be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, only utilizing the funding that is required to perform pilot project. Implementation plan, so if approval is provided, uh, the, the service would be set to begin in January 1st, 2026. Before that time, we would undertake a competitive procurement in alignment with our purchasing directives in order to engage with a third-party vendor to provide this service starting on January 1st. We would also, uh, through service agreement, ensure that the services that we expect, the goals that we have as a city are going to be maintained under that service agreement. We would reach out to our clients that are known at this time to make them aware of, we have now changed the, the vehicles that are providing that service and that if they are still interested, that it would be a service offering that we would be able to undertake. Uh, we would have to do a reassessment in order to find out that if they had additional, uh, origin or destinations, whether those would still comply with what we were looking to achieve from the information we know at the time. And then pending contract finalization, the pilot would begin on January twenty, January 1st, 2026, at the start of our fiscal year. It allows for a smooth launch and then it'll allow us for the collection of data through twenty-six and into twenty-seven with the intent that in twenty twenty-seven, we would be able to evaluate a request for twenty twenty-eight following how we see this being successful or otherwise. So we have a recommended motion that Standing Committee of the whole recommend to council that a two-year transit mobility services pilot project be approved in the amount of up to, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars commencing in twenty twenty-six to be funded from the stabilization reserve.
Uh, so question maybe you go. Why did this not come as part of the budget process this fall?
Because it was a distinct motion that provided that it be.
Okay.
Following the motion.
I think just that we would also need approval now to be able to actually have the procurement process.
Yeah. It'll take six months, right?
Maybe, yeah, great, we don't prove the budget till December, end of December. Great, okay, okay. Um, Gina, then Jolly, and then Wes.
Okay, a couple of things. So, um, I'm not, I don't know if you, if you can say how much you're expecting it to pass provide, but the seventy-five thousand a year, basically, is what we're looking at here. But we were only aware of three individuals at this moment. So I'm just, I'm trying to look, I understand you have your assumptions and we also have an increase, but are we assuming those three people are going to be using it daily? Like, I'm trying to come up with how we come up with seventy-five thousand dollars from initial.
We, we essentially use two trips per day for two hundred and sixty weekdays out, out of three hundred and sixty-five over the course of a year, utilizing a market rate, uh, to, to come up with a value for the request. Uh, like I mentioned, we also have included on top of that contingencies for an uptick for recreational trips that we really don't know what those look like right now. That, we were basing it on what we would call a scheduled paratransit trip, which is a irregular recurring trip. We used, on a conservative level, two hundred and sixty out of three sixty-five, that's, that's five days of, five days a week, kind of seven.
We're assuming that these individuals would most likely use it to go to work daily.
Workday, wherever they're going, yeah. Or for, if they had daily, it's basically you do two trips per five days a week.
So six, six trips a day, basically.
Yeah.
If there's three individuals or wherever, then plus potential, there could be more people that.
And that, and that's just it. We know of the three right now, but we are a growing city and that is also one of the things we do want to gather that data for is as we grow, what does this look like for us as we've got an aging population or otherwise? Just so us to be prepared for, um, our, our growth as St. Albert.
The thing is, I realize this is a pilot, so in two years it'll be coming forward, but I'm hoping that when this does come forward, that there might be considerations to think of third-party. Because if third-party seventy-five thousand a year on our operating costs to taking in-house seats, I, I get, you know, unless it actually came to the point where to see that they had six, it really wouldn't make any sense.
At, at a glance, this is the most cost-effective and that's why we feel it's very low risk to do this pilot project versus the alternative. Um, there would be capital costs involved with a, uh, with a, a purchase of a vehicle or two, uh, the timing of the, most important characteristic, because a single vehicle that we may have can't be in two places at once. Um, utilizing a third-party service, like a, uh, third-party vendor, they have multiple vehicles that they could actually provide that offering to have two trips occurring concurrently. Now, as the demand may grow, that may be something we look at is to provide a second vehicle or, um, you know, we also have to protect against the maintenance of a vehicle, but having one does not offer a lot of redundancy in a system. So at this point, the gathering of data, uh, low-cost option for what we know at this time is what our, our recommendation.
If I could, you know, Tim, maybe just jump on that again, you know, I think it's important to remember, uh, and I know council's well aware of this, that this is a supplement to the existing costs, right?
Absolutely.
This for a very defined set of conditions that can't be serviced otherwise, right? And so I, I don't think it's going to balloon astronomically, right? Because each of those has to be confirmed.
It's a gap.
And so our existing service that provides very good service, uh, to our, our clients, our residents, and so.
People not be eligible for this service if.
You, you're not eligible.
It's the handy bus.
For, for the, uh, the handy bus service holistically, it has to be those additional considerations.
That might, uh, we, we do have within our existing handy bus service, uh, a partnership, an agreement with Dats that provides, uh, some of the dispatching services. But during this pilot project, we're proposing to undertake that ourselves because even though one of these three clients that has not been able to provide service, they do have a trip that is not restricted due to the constraints of a parking lot or otherwise. We want to be able to have them on our regular handy bus buses. These are going to be for the very defined, uh, characteristics where the physical constraints of a parking lot or, uh, facility are restricting against it. So we have to ensure that there is not an automatic for these clients to automatically get this service. We, we want to really draw that data out of the process to find out how much it's actually going to cost to provide that vehicle to basically augment or provide the service that we have.
Thank you. Uh, with the, the people, um, it's, it's good that you mentioned there's different, you know, vehicles taking people at different times, because that was my idea. Everyone's going to work at the same time, coming home at the same time, could run into problems. But are those restricted facilities within St. Albert? Or are they traditionally like going to Edmonton or something like that? Like, I would think that most people should have an access that's proper for, so where are they going?
From what we've found from the, uh, intake of these clients, two of them are origin-related and one was destination-related. So it was.
Okay.
Their, their own facility, which, uh, is something that we also investigate, but also the destination is something that we investigate. So if somebody had a, their, their home, for instance, that was traveling to a work location that had a restriction, they could, they could use this vehicle. If they're, all of their other trips were to accessible locations, our, our destinations in Edmonton are not, uh, ad hoc, so to say. They are actual scheduled programmed locations, so they have all been vetted today. But if there is something local that they wanted to go to when they were able to use our handy bus as it is now, that would be how we would schedule that.
Hey, and I mean, you know, kudos to you, you're doing a lot of trips, you know, thirty thousand a year, that's great. But, um, with the three people, do you know how they're getting to their destination currently? Like, are we just leaving them stranded kind of thing currently?
No, right now, we don't. Uh, maybe, I'm not sure, I could pass it over to Mr. Stedler to, to write a little bit more context into the post, uh, intake process.
Anecdotally, we've, we've heard that, uh, a couple of these people will utilize family or they just won't travel. Uh, one in particular, uh, we know of utilizes family as best she can, but that option apparently is, uh, a difficult one for the family. So these are all, um, uh, individuals who just have to find other, other means or to not travel.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, Wes.
Wes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may have indeed answered all my questions already, uh, but, uh, appreciate the diligence that you put into the service design of the program, because the devil's always in the details. And, uh, and Handy Bus is a shared service model and and we don't want to go away from that. What we want to do is, is sort of address unique opportunities or needs, right? So, um, kudos to you to figure out how you figured that out. Uh, the other thing is, is that, uh, there may be a, a, a late market out there that we're not aware of. Uh, is there enough flex within your, uh, budget, if you will, to address more clients? Or will you come back and let us know if that's the case?
We wouldn't have budget constraints, obviously. See, if this motion passed, it would be something that we would be monitoring regularly and, and just like any other, uh, budget funding, we would be reporting on it regular as that goes. If we found that, you know, we were trending well over within the first several months, that would be something we would come back to. Um, I'm confident that this is going to get us going, uh, from what we know now. As, as I mentioned, there is a contingency allowed in there or provided in there to provide for an uptick. But with the information we know now, we're confident that this will get us well on our way.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions?
No, no, I think, yeah, sorry, I shouldn't say, well, no, I don't have any more one, I think.
Always do, go ahead.
I, I think, but Wes, I think you, uh, got to the, I mean, I had heard some comments that we have three right now, but I mean, whenever you shine a light into a dark place, lots of times that attracts more. So I think that, uh, if, as long as it's got the flex, that I think you'll find yourself once, once we start to advertise this and get this out, that we may become very popular. There are a lot of people that are probably using, as Will said, family or other modes get there and this would be much more convenient. So as long as it's got the flex.
Or, um, you know, through our funding and development department, and I might, you know, ask Ms. Peter for some, uh, some initial context, but you know, it is maybe, it's not common for this to be an occurrence in, uh, current standards for parking lots and that type of construction. So it is very few and far between that we come across these right now. Um, Council Broad had mentioned it, but this, this is still to be maintained as a shared service offering. It's not to transit in its essence is that it's a shared public transportation service. This isn't going to change that. Um, if, as an example, there may be an opportunity for us to have a smaller vehicle that could, could potentially transport two clients that are in restricted at the same location. We would look to uncover that stone as well. So we're not saying that this individual service in any means, it just, the nature of the vehicles provided are as such. But if it was something that could be shared, we would still look to have it as a shared opportunity.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, man.
Yeah, and I, I think, I, I know it wasn't brought up, but you, you know, even with the three cases we're looking at, I know, you know, administration, particularly transit, has looked at those sites. And the ideal is actually to resolve the issue. Provide the service. And so if it's simply a configuration about how people park and where dumpsters are and stuff, you try and work with the landowner, uh, right? Or, or to work that, that's not always possible, sometimes it's a design issue, but the team does do that, right? Because the ideal is we can use our traditional service, removing the barrier. In those cases where that can't happen or can't get A to Z on that particular front.
Thanks, that's answered that.
And Wes, would you like to make a motion? Yeah.
But. Move that Standing Committee of the whole recommend to council that a two-year transit mobility service pilot project be approved in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars commencing in twenty twenty-six to be funded from the stabilization reserve.
Awesome. Any comments?
It's a good thing. Thank you for all the work that you've done to, uh, to actually structure a program that will not only preserve our, our handy bus model, but also meet a very specific need within the community. I appreciate that.
Officer Jolly.
Thank you. I'm also really pleased to see this move forward. Um, I think it, it is overdue. If I've spoken before about, you know, in my day job, a lot of the folks that I, I work with rely on this type of transit. And, um, when it doesn't exist in St. Alberta, it places an incredible burden on, on caregivers and, um, really increases, uh, the isolation of, of folks who, who don't have access to transport right now. So thanks so much for bringing this forward.
Awesome. You know anyone else on debate? I think it's a good solution to, uh, a gap. Anything else?
No.
Top of the vote? Is that unanimous? Yes. You got off easy, Will.
Phew.
Okay, um, we only have ten minutes and I know when I took, we took the last break, that, that bunch is on its way. So let's, uh, hopefully it gets through soon. Break till maybe twelve thirty, is that okay, Natalie? Twelve thirty, go. Hopefully it's here soon.
Yeah, it was absolutely. Yeah, yeah, it was last one.
Yeah, it was absolutely fine. Yeah, yeah, it was last one.
All subs.
Mike's back. And she is back.
Okay.
We have two things left on our agenda, right? Well. So five point four. Is multi-year budgeting. Mr. Fletcher, do you want to introduce it or?
I will say that this is, I think, a fairly exciting conversation we had. We started thinking, I think, what did the talk go for a while? And looking at the concrete sort of next steps in the coming years to implement this. And so I will let, I don't know if CFO has got anything super intelligent to say. If not, we can send it over to him.
We can send it right over there.
Say what you say.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to introduce a tool, Sammy. He's our financial controller and he's leading the multi-year budgeting plan. And he's going to walk you through the progress on our project.
Right. Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Good afternoon, mayor and member of council. I'm here to walk you through the progress of the city's multi-year budgeting project. This presentation is about a journey where we are today with budget planning process, what we have learned from others and where we see ourselves heading. I'll start with what multi-year budget is and why the city is undertaking this initiative. From there, I'll share what we have heard from other peer municipalities and our own departments. We'll then look at options the project team involved based on that feedback and close with the recommendation we are bringing forward for your direction. Okay. What is multi-year budgeting and why is city undertaking this project? In simple terms, multi-year budget means moving from approving budget one year at a time to approving them in multi-year cycles. Right now, the city prepares three-year operating plan and 10-year capital plan every year, but only the first year is actually approved. This creates a process that is resource intensive, repetitive, often leads to multiple round of requests and revisions. So why change? In the 2022-2025 strategic plan, council identified financial sustainability as a key priority with a focus on long-term planning. Multi-year budget was chosen as one of the initiative to help achieve that priority. By moving to a multi-year approach, the city is aiming for three big benefits. First, efficiency in how budgets are prepared and managed. Certainty for departments, residents and council and stronger alignment between financial planning and council's long-term strategic and operational priorities. The goal is to implement multi-year budgets starting with the 2027 budget cycle. Next slide, we'll talk about our multi-year budget stakeholder engagement approach, how we gather their inputs. Over the last eight months, project team has been busy laying the groundwork for multi-year budget. We engage with four peer municipalities, Lido, Edmonton, Stratacona and Radia. Learn from their journeys. We also spoke with our own departments to hear their perspective. We focused our conversation on a few year, a few key areas like what others have done. Like what others have done successfully and what they would do differently. What parts of the process are working today and where there are pain points? The feasibility and readiness for multi-year budgeting. And finally, required tools, assumptions, training needs and process design. All of that feedback was captured in the what we heard report. And the full report is attached to this agenda report for your review. Next slide will show what we have, what we have learned from other municipalities. This table provides a snapshot of four municipalities we engage with. For Ladue, who uses, um, uh, they use as a hybrid approach. They plan three-year of operating budget, but only approve one year at a time. While approving a four-year capital multi-year budget. Edmonton has fully implemented four-year both operating and capital budget with long-term plan fully embedded in financial plan. Strathcona County combines multi-year planning with annual approvals. Operating plans are approved each year while capital budgets approved in three-year cycles. Red Deer, uh, made two attempts at implementing multi-year budget. Ultimately reverted to annual budgeting in twenty twenty-five. Key challenges, uh, included the lack of clear process. Uh, difficulties with technology implementation and limited stakeholder buy-in. These experiences provided us with both roadmap of successes to build upon. And culinary lessons to help us avoid repeating the challenges they faced. Next slide will show key opportunities and challenges they all face. Despite each municipality taking, um, slightly different approach to multi-year budgeting. Some common themes emerged. On the positive side, where there were strong strategic alignment. Budgets were better linked to long-term goals and council priorities. Project and procurement timing improved and leading to fewer delays and better efficiencies. And importantly, uh, tax moving and longer-term planning help ease the pressure on annual taxes. But these successes also came with some challenges. The upfront workload was heavy, especially around process development, training and change management. Multi-year budget also relies heavily on robust forecasting data, uh, clear assumptions and flexible annual adjustment mechanism. And perhaps the main lesson, uh, with clear stakeholder buy-in, even a well-designed process can stop. We saw that in Red Deer's case in previous slide. These take would give us a roadmap of what might work in, uh, well in St. Albert and where extra care will need to avoid setbacks. Next slide, we'll talk about what our internal stakeholder engagement review. Our internal department engagement show both excitement and calling. Departments see real opportunity in multi-year but budgeting. They value finance partnerships. They prefer early forecasting and assumption guidelines. And they see the benefit of longer-term plan. At the same time, they flag some big challenges such as siloed planning, limited cost department collaboration. Heavy reliance on spreadsheets. Planning process, timing of operating and capital budgets are different. And importantly, the need for clear, flexible process for annual adjustment and emergent or unforeseen items. So with this, uh, all this feedback in mind, the project team pulled together some options for consideration. Next slide will walk through those. Based on the engagement findings, project team developed three options. Option A, city implements full multi-year budget. Four-year for operating and capital starting in twenty twenty-seven. This is the most ambitious option, but with high implementation risk. Option B, a phased approach. Start with two-year budget cycle, then gradually builds to four-year. That it's a balanced approach and lower risk of failure at it, and it gives time to refine processes and build capacity. Option C, start with capital only while keeping operating budget annual. This makes things easy to start, but miss opportunity, uh, of operating budget integration benefits. Each option, uh, offers different balance of benefits and risk. More detail on these options are provided in the what we heard report. Next slide will walk, uh, talk about what is included in what we heard before. The what we heard report brings together all of the detailed finding from both in external and internal engagements. It shows how the feed, how that feedback was applied and it is all, it is also included. The in-depth analysis on three different options we just reviewed. The full report is attached to this agenda for your review, if you would like to dig deeper into the details. On the next slide, we'll shift focus to on how these options, three options were taken forward. Specifically how executive leadership and the project advisory committee discussed them and narrow them down. Let's take it, take a look at what came out of those discussions. When we presented the three options. Both executive leadership and the project advisory committee valued them carefully. Option A, the full multi-year budget for both operating and capital starting in twenty-seven was seen as a, but also very high risk. Option V, a phased approach offers, offers the right balance, but the tight timeline made this whole rollout difficult. Option C, starting four-year capital multi-year budget only had, had its strengths. But was seen as missed opportunity by leaving the operating budget unchanged. The administration also recognized the reality that we are just six months away from start planning for the twenty twenty-seven budget cycle. Therefore, we don't have the time or resource to move both operating and capital into multi-year budget at the same time. After weighing all of this, the consensus recommendation is to proceed with hybrid approach. Which is moving into four-year capital multi-year budget, starting from twenty to act, from twenty-seven to twenty thirty period. And then two-year operating multi-year budget, starting from twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty year. Next slide will show how this phase transition would unfold over time. So this slide shows what does phase transition would actually look like in practice. Starting in twenty twenty-seven, we would implement a four-year capital multi-year budget covering here from twenty-seven to twenty. From there, we would continue the subsequent four-year cycles, twenty thirty-one to twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five to twenty thirty-eight and so on. On the operating side, we would begin in twenty twenty-nine with a two-year multi-year budget covering twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty. This phase transition would continue with two more, two-year cycles, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two and twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four. Then, beginning in twenty thirty-five, operating and capital would fully align with four-year multi-year budget cycle. This phase path allow us to build experience and capacity with capital budget first. Test and refine the process and then bring operating budget into the framework in more manageable way. On the next slide, I'll walk you through the rationale why administration is recommending capital first and why operating would follow after two years. There are five main reasons why administration believes this hybrid approach of phase transition is the right path forward. First, capital readiness. Our capital budget process already functioned on a multi-year horizon. With four-year project prioritization and a ten-year capital plan in place. Moving to a four-year multi-year budget cycle for capital budget. Built directly on, builds directly on this framework. What we need to do is develop a process, refine assumptions and strengthen forecasting tools. Uh, and train the departments, uh, and not to start from scratch. Second, operating complexity. Operating budgets are far more dynamic. They are shaped by service levels, staffing needs and inflation. To do multi-year budgeting well on the operating side will need a stronger forecasting tool, more accurate data. And greater readiness, greater readiness across departments. Third, timeline consideration, trying to implement a two-year operating multi. Two-year operating multi-year budget as early as twenty-seven, twenty-eight would put us high demand on resources and increase the risk of failure. By differing operating multi-year budget to twenty twenty-nine, we give departments the time to strengthen their processes, tools and training. Fourth, uh, learning from capital, starting with capital, give us a manageable first step. It lets us, let us, uh, test our change management strategy, refine communication and make process improvements. The lesson learned, we can then apply directly when we expand multi-year budgeting into operating budgets. And last, uh, risk management, a phased approach reduces the risk of overwhelming staff and failure. At the same time, it ensures we continue making meaningful progress toward council's long-term strategic projects. So this hybrid approach, phase transition is about building confidence, managing risk and setting ourselves up for success. On the next slide, we'll look at implementation plan. Like which lines up and how, uh, implement, sorry, implementation plan lines up and how hybrid multi-year budget approach aligns with council terms and elections. Implementation plan has been carefully designed to line up multi-year budget cycle with council terms and election cycles. The guiding principle is straightforward. No new council should be asked to approve a multi-year budget immediately upon taking office. Instead, each council, new council will first have full year to gain insight into city operations. Familiarize themselves with budget process and finalize council priorities and strategic plan before being asked to approve their first multi-year budget cycle. For example, as shown on this slide, if council, if council approves this plan in fall of twenty twenty-six. The newly elected, uh, council will approve the twenty twenty-seven annual operating budget along with first. Four-year capital multi-year budget for twenty-seven to twenty thirty. Then if everything stay on track in fall of twenty twenty-eight, the same council will approve the first two-year operating multi-year budget for twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty. Then in fall twenty thirty, the next newly elected council will prove the second two-year. Operating multi-year budget for twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, along with second four-year. Capital multi-year budget for twenty thirty-one, thirty-four. This cycle continues until twenty thirty-five, thirty-eight, when the operating multi-year budget fully aligns with. Four-year capital multi-year budget as we seen in the prior slide. This sequence will give us both continuity by keeping long-term planning in place and flexibility by ensuring each new council has time to get grounded before making multi-year commitments. On the next slide, I'll, I'll outline the immediate next step that will follow if council approve this plan. If council approve multi-year budgeting, administration will immediately start working on developing the processes, tools. And training needed to support multi-year budget. In fall twenty twenty-six, administration will bring forward both the first four-year. Capital multi-year budget and annual twenty twenty-seven operating budget for council approval. This will give us clear runway. Implement capital multi-year budget first, then transition operating with two-year cycle with lessons and refinement applied along the way. With that timeline in mind. Let's now turn to the specific recommendation we are bringing forward to your direction today. Today, we need your direction on first that the standing committee on hold recommend to the council that the city proceed with implementing. The four-year capital multi-year budgeting framework, beginning with the twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty budget cycle. Second, the committee, the committee recommends to council that the city proceed with. Implementing a two-year operating multi-year budgeting framework, beginning with twenty twenty-nine, thirty operating budget cycle. Together, these two steps create a manageable and balanced pathway forward. One that council advanced long-term strategic priorities while also reducing risk and building organizational awareness. That concludes end of my presentation. Thank you. I'm happy to discuss any questions.
Thank you. Been a long time coming. Good work. Open for questions. Go ahead, Sheena.
I have to.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sheena, then Mike. So what I don't understand is how would the actual budget process differ with what you've proposed on? Will we not be meeting annually for anything? Or I'm looking at like, well, actually both of them, but operating. At this moment is, so we just, you're saying for two years, we're just like, here, here is for two years, we don't look at it for two more years or do we come back? How does this process differ from what we're providing?
Oh, yeah. Um, again, the process, uh, we still have to devote the process. But overall, it will, council will still have opportunity to, uh, look at the annual adjustments, even if they approve multi-year visiting. So there'll be a process, um. Around like when, for, for instance, right now, we bring the whole budget. In the fall to prove, uh, it will be more on significant changes if we approve multi-year budget.
So I think council, you can still see it on an annual basis, right? But we would only be bringing forward those things that you wish to change or have changed as opposed to that foundational level of what's been already. So that the flexibility to, uh, react. Because I mean, especially when you look at four years, nobody's crystal ball, uh, right? Notwithstanding the maturity of the data, of the professional assessment that goes into it, reality has a way of sort of gearing its head, right? To be in that deal with it. So the annual ability to adjust off that baseline has to be baked into this system.
Well, like, again, a bit of operating, I know it's not very bad, but so we say we're proving seven F T Vs now and eight F T Vs next year. With full stop, but that's kind of. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, because the forecasting, if we just look back four years, like we did from year to year. It, there was a lot of variance that occurred. And a lot of just world events change and a lot of circumstances where what we would have thought we would have done in twenty twenty-one. Changed dramatically before twenty twenty-three. And yet we're like, how can we actually accurately, like you have in here a stronger forecasting? I have no idea how we would get stronger forecasts that we couldn't, with, that we are not already implementing it to now. So like that, I just. I, I don't understand, because it feels like we're almost trying to operate this like in a vacuum, like whatever it is today is what it will be in twenty-four months or forty-eight months. And so many things change.
I think it would provide that stronger framework that we would have in estimating those years out, but like, like. Mr. Fletcher, we do too, we're always going to have that opportunity each year to update those major assumptions. Or like if the economy changes. And or refer to, did major trends change in that past year? Which we would catch up and make recommendations and amendments. So it's really giving you that broader framework of the four years to see. And then to be flexible and fluid to adjust to.
I don't see how many other flexible fluid be like this. I can see we are proving, or like you run capital, you're proving four years in advance, but. And then there was, there were, there were changes every single year in capital where issues may have revolved into us or direction may change for other reasons. And I'm just struggling right now. I know that other communities have done this. That isn't necessarily that it's the right fit for everybody, but I'm try, I'm struggling on how we could actually be confident that we're not just. Moving forward blindly. But when this was first brought forward. You know, there was an argument like, well, we know we're going to need three buses this year and four buses next year, so we'll get the bulk deals. And that makes sense. But there's a lot of elements that we'd be pre-approving that really aren't necessary to be pre-approved, because there's no real savings. Or value added to it, other than just we're pre-approving it. And that's where I'm struggling is the encompassing of doing everything when there's actually only a benefit for a limited portion of it.
I think the, that the biggest benefit, and I think council had mentioned it this year, was that if we had a sightline of what the future years were encompassing, say. Salary increases are going to be higher than average for the next three years. If you would know that now, it would impact and give you a broader idea of the framework of the decisions you're making today. If we need to put some money aside or to have that. If you think about the city overall and the operations. You don't see significant changes in the four operational service levels. You're seeing that and then you're seeing the capital charges, which if we approve them not for your plan. You could have that idea, have the operating impacts and understand what those impacts are. And the tax requirements and funding requirements required for that longer-term vision. But the reality is there is going to be change to the economy. And things that are uncertain come up or changes in services that we understand and new information. And we'll always accommodate that information coming into the process annually, which will develop.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm still struggling with this, quite frankly, as you can probably see. I could see where you'd want to do a hybrid, where you say we're confident with these particular elements that we need to be putting to a long-term plan. And then those other ones would then go into a patent ball. But saying it's all, and then we're going to do minor adjustments, I think it leads to more opportunities to overlook. So many items, but just so many different things that we would be making assumptions on that we proved to be incorrect. So I just, I'm, I'm struggling on how this would actually provide anything other than just we're pre-approved in a lot of things. And then I also feel like you're less likely to be able to really, you're going to enlarge the package I'm approving, the harder it is to do deep dives to understand what I'm approving. So now it's more like I'm just approving stuff for four years. I'm approving people for four years. We don't really know what or why, but we're just gonna pre-approve everybody. Because you've given us a document that's two or three times the size of a regular budget document, then say, are you good with it? And so I feel this actually just provides less clarity as to what council is gonna be. Um approving. I I'm, like I said, if you have a little portions, it would be relevant, but this policy as it stands is too all-encompassing for us to transition.
I'm sorry, I could just add in a couple of things. Yeah, so I I guess one of the, one of the mitigating factors that we put in there is that, especially on the operating side. Because that's the, that's the piece you're probably having maybe more of the concern with is on the operating side, while we're starting with a two-year cycle and going through. Three two-year cycles, right, to give us that opportunity to refine processes, refine, understand where, you know, in year two of the first one, we find we had as many changes. As it almost would have been a budget, what could we change to fix that? So by the time we get to a fourth year, we're hoping we'll have gone through three cycles to help. Um fill those gaps, like if we're, if we're seeing those kind of gaps or kind of issues, like what will we do to mitigate them? So that's part of the the. Reason why we were suggesting um bringing on the the operating budget much slower. And and we will still be doing um tax rate bylaws have to be done only, right? Um so that's why there 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 will be the. The option. And not only would we be bringing forward changes where we might need an increased budget in area, we would also be bringing forward changes where. Things didn't turn out as bad as we anticipated and we would be bringing in a reduction potentially. Um, you know, in that annual checkpoint, but that ability to have more long-term planning is very helpful for our departments as well, when they're planning their staffing, they're planning their. There are projects to understand who needs to be available, kind of at what time, that that longer-term framework uh really adds a lot of clarity. Um for administration to know what we should be, should be focused on and working on.
I can see in some cases it would be valid, but there's a lot of cases where it wouldn't be and that then we're just approving anyway. Like if there was better parameters of what. Under what circumstances you would be doing the multi-year versus what circumstances would then also just be done annually? Um, like maybe you say, we absolutely realize that we're gonna be doing this because we're hiring, whatever, like these. Are public works, and we know we're gonna need these people this year, this year, this year, that makes sense. But if there's other things that are just kind of like. Potential program expansions or something like this, that does not have a what it need to tell you and it wants you to have it, then you're just pre-approving this. But like what I'm wondering, that's all in the capital, is so the next council. Not this year, but the following year, they're gonna just basically pre-approve everything in the capital plan? Like, there's a lot of things that. Like I just think if we were to approve everything that we're going to approve in year two, this entire term. That's a lot to have a council agree to upfront like that and then have to make those major decisions. Of that magnitude. Like at that one junction. And then say, well, you approved it, we're going down the road, we're now in year three, you approved it, and you, like, I just feel like that could be. A lot. I I I just don't know if that's actually gonna have the proper diligence from a council perspective. I understand your perspective. And how it'd be helpful, but from a decision-maker perspective, to throw that much on a person's plate and say, decide what you're gonna do for the next four years. If I asked you to put a five-year plan for your life, and you could not change it, or you could only do minor tweaks. And we are following that plan, you would say, you know, you're crazy. And yet that's what we're saying we're gonna do for a massive organization, on major decisions. And that's where I'm. Again, if we had parameters of this is where we would do it and this is where we wouldn't, but saying it is an encompassing thing, that's where I'm really struggling right now. So, but that's where I'm at.
Okay, so I have some questions related here with um the comment provides certainty to residents. Uh and staff, so I can see the certainty to staff, because you know, you're doing your projections of wage increases and if staff stays constant and such, but. In uh the previous budgets have had like, you know, our population growth was one point three percent. And then we have increased staff far more than we have the population growth. So how will you project what that growth would be for? For operating costs years down the road, kind of thing.
That's again part of developing the process and forecast assumptions uh and that yet. But I guess uh. If if we could bring this, the the residents would be more interested in knowing what their tax rate would look like over the period. Uh I think that that they will be more interested in regardless which process. Follow multi-year and that. And and by doing multi-year budgeting, I think one is we are trying to. Link with long-term planning, the council strategy plan, which uh would bring predictability. And the goal of multi-year budgeting is um to not have. Hundreds of changes every other year. And that depends on how. Forecasting tools and the process has been developed. Uh for that, that's what something I hope that answers your question.
So I'm viewing it, if you, you know, if you provide certainty to staff, well, your wage increases will be this and you'll be here like the next four years and then something changes and. And then they're going, oh, I, you know, I kind of thought I was, that was gonna be four years and my wage is gonna be this and and you have to change things. Sometimes you just have to change things. You don't. You know, you don't have the funds or or things change in your community. So I I it's almost like providing a guarantee that you really always can't provide. And then if I'm looking at it from a resident's point of view. That you're telling them, oh, your tax increases will only be like five percent for the next four years. Well, then they're immediately hearing twenty percent and there's no hope for four years, right? So I mean, that's, there's, although you use the term tax smoothing, I didn't feel that it felt smooth. To to staff or to residents. So and I'm assuming that's what tax will be means is a predictable kind of prepare. For this tax increase this many years going forward, is that what you meant by tax?
Thing essentially is trying to avoid rapid quality changes. It's not about guaranteeing a streamline or. A plateau, right? It's about trying to avoid the peaks and the valleys, right?
But you would never, you wouldn't, when you're giving them four years, for example, you wouldn't. Be able to know if there would be a lesser amount, you're predicting it probably a little bit high as.
The annual adjustments would would be four and I I would I would caution that this isn't about staff increases or. Uh like raises for staff. I mean, at the end of the day, you do a projection and then annually. You make sure you had enough money, right? And if it's less than the indicators that we use, for an example, to look at cost of living or less, staff. Business cases actually aren't mapped to growth in population, that's certainly a metric, right? Uh but they're actually. Maped to delivering on service lines uh first and foremost. I would just caution, those are two elements that I understand council's concern from the government.
They're connected, but not.
They're not, they're imparted, but this is more about the operation.
Okay, and then I'm looking at the four comparable uh comparable municipalities and I mean. The most successful one seems to be the one that did the, you know, the four-year capital and didn't do the operating. They actually, you know. Showed some improvement. The other ones, we've got, uh you know, sixteen percent gap between revenue and expenses, spending. Not uh spending needs not met, rising operating costs, increasing operation costs. Uh six point one percent tax increases, so ten point three five tax increases. So they're not feel-good stories in the four comparables. You know, from my perception in reading them and uh other than essentially the first one that didn't go into operating. And I mean, again, it depends on the size of community. We're comparing very small, you know, large, large, large communities against. Much smaller communities. And so, again, hard to predict in in different cases and your tax base. So the. I just, you know, I mean, how did you choose the four? Like, did you just pick random four places that are doing this? Multi-year budgeting already, or how did you choose?
Do you compare municipalities?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just looked at mid uh all different sizes of municipalities, uh which so like our surroundings, so we picked. Mid-sized cities, uh with you um Red Deer and um Strata Corner. Also City of Saint Albert, because they uh City of Edmonton, because they have full. Four-year mul- if operating and capital multi-year budget. Um the hard process was to get experience from all mid, all type of municipality, bigger and smaller. And then come with the come, the season, what what we're gonna bring forward.
Is there any out there that in their, in their capital uh budgeting, were they, did they go a lesser term, like two years? You know, to try it out kind of thing, or is it, they jumped right into four years?
I think uh Edmonton started with two-year.
Hmm.
And then went slowly, they gradually approved, uh moved to four-year.
Okay, so why did you, you know, choose four-year as a start?
Uh because we already have a precedent place for capital here in Saint Albert, so we present ten-year capital plan.
Yeah.
And then um we prioritize four-year uh capital projects. For against the funding available and that's how we, we have that precedent place already, which we are thinking leveraging out to. Do multi-year budgeting for this year.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Mike's first.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Could, could you just uh do a bit of a clarification for me? Our, I think our operating budget is like two hundred and. Twenty million or something like that? And our capital's a hundred and ten or in in that range? Yeah, so, so it, just so we get a, a sense of the numbers, this to councillor Hughes' comment. The size of the numbers that we're, we're talking about. I I'm, I'm used from an industry perspective to do multi-year budget, because you have. Major capital projects, it's been many years and they are approved multi-year and you. You know, tweak them as as you go. So I'm I'm certainly familiar with that um. And the benefits of it. You, you have stability in knowing, you know. Long-term, how you're going to invest your money. So I I I get that. The the one question that comes up and it, you know, I'm gonna shoot myself for asking those questions. But it's around transparency to residents. We al- we always hear, how do we keep our budget transparent? Now, I know we, I I believe we do a pretty darn good job with, you know, quarterly reports and. I would track everything and report it, but there is still a sense, um very strong sense in the community. That we, we could do better on transparency with budgeting. It's very complex. Um, how how would that help with the overall transparency? And my second question is tied to that. How uh how do we, how do we make, where do we do the the fine tuning and changes? For, for example. We wanna rebuild, we wanna build um a community amenities site, multi-years. We wanna have a budget that, you know, was consistent for that big project. We wanna get it done, we wanna build a pool, we wanna build, you know, whatever. Um, but if construction costs go up or down, um. If there are other factors, design changes, all of those things, how would, how would council? Have some governance over that? And well, it's, you know, the plan is too expensive, we're gonna have to. A climbing wall, uh for example, we wanna get the pool done. Um, and and then how do I make sure that that is very. Tightly linked to any impact to taxes, so that we don't. Kind of get this ball rolling. And then not have any governance and and control over impact to taxes. Kind of a loaded bunch of questions there, but.
I can start with the transparency piece. We see the multi-year budgeting enhancing the transparency. Because it would provide to residents and communication, that longer-term vision of these are the decisions and impacts that we're making in the community. And provide that public input and feedback into that longer-term vision. To where, okay, these are what the city is gonna be investing in the operating capital, both through the phased approach for sure. Will provide even more transparency, because we're providing that clarity to not just approving the one year where they might have felt. Residents might have felt, well, wasn't involved in the decision or didn't have input. This way would be, you're providing that longer-term approval. But then you're providing those, just as we do with budget adjustments, you're saying, what is the opportunity that we can re- revise, say. An operating or capital charter that there's been, we would have that annual process that would say, okay. These capital. Are now increasing, inflationary costs are going up in this particular capital projects, we would capture that. But keep in mind, we would still, for any ones that were already approved, we would still have that process that we have. That we look at the carryforwards and what's closed, and if we need any adjustments, we would have that, we would combine that. But then we'd have that process, similar to now that we have for the budget adjustments annually, that instead of doing it from that December to May. You would be doing it for that, that last year and anything we've learned through that last year of what we're forecasting needs to change. So we do see it as an opportunity to enhance the communication and transparency. But of course, that's something that will, because we're doing it as a phased approach, will take the learnings and amend it to make sure we're. Being utmost transparent and including residents and council.
Now, on the governance side, um I'd say council would still have opportunity annually twice a year to see the changes. If they, if they approve multi-year, but they'll still have authority and governance to to change. Uh and approve the changes to construction cost uh or anything else related to capital. Um so that by me, council retaining the authority to approve changes at any time. But normal process would be bringing twice a year, um fall and fall and then spring. So that's how the change it would bring in every year, even though council have approved multi-year budget.
Um so just following then that, for, let's say for a big capital project with multi-year budgeting. Would we go to tender for a full package of, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna commit to the. Contractor that this is a funded project for all, all four years. We're not gonna come back and say, hey. Um, things have changed, you're halfway through, we're gonna, you know. O- o- only pave the northbound lanes of Saint Albert Trail and not the southbound lane, or something, just to use an example.
Council, that approach would change it all under this new construct to what we do now, at at the end of the day, right? And so if you've got. Uh a charter and associated, whether it's a borrowing bylaw or that funding, right, that's approved, got almost multi-year big projects, it would be this.
The same.
Council would have the same oversight and opportunity, right? Uh and we would not be able to sort of go off and. Uh based on the current policies and the constraints, we come back to council, it'll alter it.
And. Then on, on our implementation for operating. The the impact to taxes, how would we, how would we manage that?
Probably, uh again, if you're approving multi-year budgeting, it will provide guideline to what the tax, future tax rates would look like. Because it can change if, due to some external factors or economic factors, it can change. But it does provide certainty to all stakeholders, including residents, that what they're heading into. And um and and that provides some predictability of making plans and also. Um, the council has committed to multi-year budgeting with these projects coming online over the year. So so that provides certainty to them as well and also council.
Then you'd still need that annual process with those updates and those changes for the certainty to do and then pass that tax rate by law within that year. Something similar.
Yeah, yeah, because like ninety percent of our operating budget is fixed, basically, right? Or or maybe even more, right? But it's running the city as. As is, right?
Eighty percent of our.
Eighty percent?
Eighty percent of our services, operating budget, maintaining.
Yeah.
Eighty-two.
If I could decide to, one of the, one of the advantages you're gonna have with a multi-year budget is, is, you know, we're obviously gonna be forecasting a three to four years, what the tax increase looks like. As we start moving through, if we start seeing in the future that, oh my goodness, this looks like it's gonna be higher, if something's changed in the environment, it looks like it's gonna be higher. It gives us opportunity in that interim period to start having discussions about, how are we gonna mitigate that? To get down to either what we said we were gonna be in that year or or lower than that. It gives us opportunity to talk about service levels, to talk about. Um all those kind of things to basically change the future, hopefully, before it comes. Whereas when we're doing it a year at a time, we're, we're kind of just reacting to the environment at the time. Um and doesn't give us that opportunity to have those, those conversations ahead of time to be able to actually mitigate some of that.
Now, the benefits that the other municipalities have. Now, the benefits that the other municipalities have experienced with the multi-years, their ability to strategize and then change their decisions in order, hey, I have that two years ahead that is looking like a higher tax increase, so we might not make that decision today. And so that's they were able to um amend their decisions to essentially.
Just one follow, one follow-up question and that Edmonton has struggled with this, that they're trying to shift their, their or keep their budget back to what it was in, but assessment split, right, eighty-twenty? How, how does, how does this support trying to drive toward a budget that is more weighted on, less, less on reliance on taxes from residents and more on business side? Does, does that play into this at all? Do we have a sense of how this could help achieve that or?
It'll give us more of an indication of where our revenues are coming and where we're predicting them to come and give that vision of where we're needed. So it really is on that split, the goal was revenue maximization in that assessment roles. Um, and we would have that predictable pattern that we could see and communicate to say, where is the need or based on the growth that we're seeing, what is, what is the potential revenue coming in? Which will have that income to offset the potential tax increase or increase in expenses. So it does give that sightline of where the growth would be coming expected. In addition to, so that's revenue side, in addition to our expenses.
If I can just sort of remind councils, while we work on a revenue neutrality perspective from a tax perspective, right? So the, the budget itself, which is what we're talking about, if council approves as the budget, is, is kind of just the, the input into that, who pays it is, is on that split, right? Um, basically on our non-res to res assessment. So, so what we're doing here doesn't impact the split. The split basically impacts who is paying those dollars that we are required because we only collect as much money as is required to run the municipality. We don't collect a dollar, dollar more. It's just how it's split out among the res and non-res.
Thank you.
Who's next, Ben?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I think like, Mike, I come from a background in multi-year budgeting, so I've worked within it, I've, I've seen the benefits of it and I, because I've worked in it, I didn't have a problem with it. Um, and I'm thinking what's me, just looking at the recommendation. So if, if we approve number one, does that mean that we're proceeding with implementing it or will we get to look at the devils in the detail? Because I think one thing that perhaps is missing is a comparison of our current, what it would look like in multi-year so that you could actually have a comparison, say, okay, this is going for a multi-year, this is what, this is what it looks like now and then how, how, how does it work in both ways? I've worked in both ways, so I, I, I can see that, but I think what's missing in, in our background area is here's what we're doing now, here's what it would look like in a multi-year or a two-year. And then, and then that would probably mitigate some of the concerns we're hearing in relation to transparency, flexibility, perceptions. Um, because I mean, I mean, there's no doubt that there's benefits in multi-year budgeting in relation to forecast love, uh, stability and long-term vision planning. The challenge is, is making sure that we got robust forecasting skills that I don't know whether or not we have currently. And that's the challenge. So I mean, if we, I think what I, what I would like to see is, hey, before I, before we approve this or recommend approval, we actually see what it looks like and maybe, and maybe uh, that's what administration is actually looking to do is, okay, we recommended, then you're gonna come back with an implementation plan, what does that look like, comparisons and all that? But I just didn't want to jump ahead and interpret that because what I'm thinking we're missing is the comparison, what does it look like now, what does it look like in this?
Yeah, and, and I think we would play with the language a little bit if that's what council wanted to go, I'll, I'll be honest with you. Um, if council today says like, we're not interested in this, I would just assume not do any more work.
Yeah.
Like, oh, just, oh, truthfully, right? And, and I don't mean that in a majority sense.
No.
Governance perspective, that this is not something council wants, we will gladly part it and go on with other things. If council's interested, if there is enough interest, then, you know, I think that's an option. Is for us to be able to come with perhaps some, you know, having done the work that a tool's spoken about, right? To say that here's the process and here's how we do it, here's the uh, the, the, how we collect the data, model it and analyze it. We could provide that, that, that's a fair amount of work uh to get there.
Good, yeah.
Or do it with a, an understanding that council would be amenable to having that discussion. But, but if you're not, again, council's responsible for governance. Tell us to, to forgive the terminology down tools on this, right? That's a, a.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to give uh those members of councils that haven't worked within a, a multi-year budgeting the opportunity to see what it looks like. And I, I, I understand completely some of the, that's their fears and risks and, and, and uh their, their you know, I mean, their valuable insights and, and, and understandable. So, but I mean, if I, I think if we could show council that this is what it looks like today compared to what it would look like and how, and that, I think it would clearly delineate the pros and cons and alleviate some of the fears that are right or the questions anyway.
And that is a great question. This, throughout this council terms something with that capital prioritization matrix and the recommendations. Whenever you saw this um, the proposed capital recommendations, you had seen those four years out which had taken into consideration. So essentially, you've been seeing a draft multi-year budget, but you're not actually approving it. But through the last, I think it's four years we've done, the city has shown that first year.
Yeah.
And they've shown those next three to four years out with funding. So that was almost like you see that, that draft and you've seen as we've done that, it's really smoothed out and you've seen little to no. And with all the discussions over the debt and the debt's capacity and the longer-term vision, you've seen that flow, it, it be um, less, like less changing and a little more consistent year to year. So it would be essentially then taking those recommendations that you're seeing in that proposed and it would be approving those four years. So not only just that first year, it'd be approving those, all those recommendations within those four, which of course Mr. Fletcher referred to, if we're, we, if this is a big change and we want council to be comfortable with it and that's why we recommended the phased approach, but if it's not something you're comfortable at this point, it's something we can take back and draft out and.
I, I just, I just want to make sure that there's a full understanding and I don't think, if you haven't worked within it, there's, you, you, all of the cons that have been raised and you've identified are big boogie of that. Like, I mean, they're big, they're, they're the fear of lock-in, the fear of la- la- not having the flexibility to change something based on public feedback or perception or the fear that we're not being transparent or the fear that you've just forecasted four years of five percent increases or seven percent increases and, and how do we get out of that? But I've worked within that and there's mechanisms and methods to deal with that. But I didn't see them here because you're just asking us to kind of start a hybrid process. I think I, I, if I, if, if somehow you could show that or demonstrate that, then I think that there'd be buy-in. I, I mean, I'm, I, I understand it and I'm not afraid of it and I'm willing to try it. But I don't know whether or not the majority of council would be that makeup, based on what I'm hearing.
So if I can just suggest that today, part of the reason we wanted to come today again is a bit of this principles-based discussion because we, I know we, we've talked about, it's been in our pocket for a while, this multi-year budgeting, we've talked about it with council before, but before again, but like Mr. Fletcher said, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to get there. So we want to make sure that we still kind of got the support of council. Um, as Ms. Victor had said as well, on the, on the capital side, that one's probably more important, to be honest with you. With all the discussions we've been having around our debt strategy and that, like, actually knowing what council is approving in debt, we still four years helps us. Again, we're talking twenty-year debt terms, it's very hard for us to do long-term debt planning when it's like, well, we think council might approve this project versus this project. So even having that four years, because it's such a long-term thing, capital is, is to me more important from a multi-year perspective. And I would say we're eighty percent there, we've been working towards this for a while, even though we have never asked you to approve more than one year. We're kind of working in the back of our minds like as if we were. Um, part, that's part of the reason also why we're not recommending implementing the operating until twenty twenty-nine is because we now need this time to go through and help work through some of these issues that you're kind of raising up. So like, I would see us coming back to council, um, partway through as we just started developing processes and strategies and, and, you know, touching base to make sure that we're kind of meeting all those points or if you see other areas that uh, you know, require, require clarification. Because again, the, the annual checkpoint and ability to, to change things, that's, that was very clear from our current municipalities that we did, that's one of the key pieces that you have to have robust processes that are transparent, that everybody understands, um, and that there is those opportunities. Like council still has that, that governance to be able to change things. But having that longer-term view of what you're working towards with some changes is still really helpful for everybody to have that longer-term vision. And again, being able to align with a, with a council strategic plan over a four-year period, you'd be able to see those links to those strategic priorities.
So.
But I'm, I'm just, I mean, what I'm trying to get, and sorry, I know Wes, you've got a question maybe. What I'm trying to see is whether or not that that current recommendation would identify that? Is that's part of the implementation or do we, do, would we just say that? I'm just trying to seek a word. Because I just don't, I just think that that's what's missing, a, a demonstration of how it looks now compared to what it would look like.
Yeah, I mean.
Think you have to.
Term implementing, right? Probably play with that.
Yeah, in a little bit.
A plan to, uh, a plan on how we would implement then thereby providing council another ability to come back and say, yes or no, right? Like this, this stuff.
How about an implementation plan?
Yeah, that would work, that would work. What, yeah, I think that would work, I think, because that's a work, the implementation plan would identify those components, I would assume. I, I would, I don't want to get prescriptive in that, I just want to get prescriptive in it. And I recognize that that requires a lot of work too, right? So, you know, I'm just cautious, I'm just.
Oh, a- and again, I hope my comments were misinterpreted. I didn't want to presuppose that council would say, yes, we'll approve it if you come back with a plan.
Yeah.
Um, but if we're gonna produce a plan, I just want to ensure council's open to looking at the plan.
Need one more.
Yeah, if council is not at a majority level there today.
But I don't want to lose it, I don't want to lose it.
I put the, right, put this on the backboard for sure.
I don't want to lose that because I, I know the benefit of a multi-year uh budget and I know it's something we've kicked around a little bit here. And, but I, and so I, and I just think that if we have that little bit piece, so maybe the, the implemented an im- implementation plan of what a, what a, what multi-budgeting framework would look like and then we don't actually even need the second one? Because you're gonna do both, right? With that.
Well, we, I mean, but I mean, we could do one or the other. That's why we split up the recommendations because there is the opportunity to do.
I, I would recommend that, that just based on this, we, we do separate them. We can figure out that during the motion and we would come as a priority with the capital year and the, since, or the capital budget rather, in the first instance, followed by the operating budget if they were.
Oh, you wanna? The second motion says proceed implementing a two-year operating budget.
Now, the principle.
Twenty-nine to thirty. So that would be debated in fall twenty-eight. So that would be the last budget of next term. So that council would have had three years of one-year budgets and then in that three years, you could probably be showing them each year of those first three years what it would look like. Hmm, that's the plan, I think, almost that Council Mackay is talking about, say. Because you see it, we do see it already, but it's not pointed out to us, right? So maybe if you just sort of start pointing it out to, so if, if we were doing a two-year plan, this is what we'd, we'd be looking at. But the actual portal doesn't happen to December of twenty-eight for twenty-nine. Yeah, yeah. It's gonna take um, a really bought-in council to do this and it's gonna take um, a group of people that are open to it and that can break free from the single years. Like, we've just so used to doing a single year at a time that, that council's gonna have to be able to break free from that. And if you don't, you're gonna get, what I see already in Edmonton is they re-debate. Even though it's just a tweaking every year, they re-debate the whole thing and it takes almost more time than the original approval. So, but unless you try, you'll never know. And that, so I'm completely supportive of your recommendations and uh, I hope that council is ready to try something because I like the predictability of it. So I'm debating.
I know, I was just gonna say, where are we?
I'm sorry. I, I was, I was just asking the question, it would be the last budget of next term. Go ahead, Wes. Or did I get everybody, Mike, you're good, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, well, thanks for your questions, uh, Council Mackay, it's uh, I'm just looking at your report and, and uh, so there's learnings to be had from the, your four municipalities. I'm hopeful that you'll go down and camp with Red Deer and understand why it failed there. Uh, but I, I think how it failed is just what is being demonstrated here. How does this work? How do, how do we address sort of contingencies that come upon us on an annual basis? What does that look like? And so to the point of appreciate two, three years out because timelines put things under pressure and things tend to fall apart real quick. So is that the plan then is to clearly don't define how we're gonna do business? Because we've got questions, legitimate questions that need to be answered uh, to sort of calm our fears around it.
Yeah, uh, I think that was the um thought process behind providing these recommendation to do the phased approach, not go all in once. Uh, and leveraging the processes that we already have for capital and then slowly learning from those to implement operating in twenty twenty-nines. And um, of course, we have learned a lot from different peer municipalities. Uh, good stories, bad stories, and we are, that's why we take an impartial approach to build slowly and, and that reduce the risk of failure here as well.
Because I, I understand the sort of long-term benefit of doing this, I do. But there's a complexity of managing that within the public ground because public ground's gonna wonder what's gonna happen to me on this year. And oh, by the way, you're doing it to me four years in a row?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So anyway, it's.
Won't you be married for like years?
At council, so you know, it's all taken, so I, I, you know, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, I'm probably, but this year again, but um, is that, you know, in order to actually make a better informed decision, in order to be comfortable or not, right? With the end of it, you want to see what an iteration, what are, what goes into it? How does it happen? And then how do you do it over the cycle, right? And so whether that's, you know, a, a, a mock run-through concurrent to, you know, a budget or whatever. Um, it's not lost to me that if we rush the failure on this, right? Public confidence, your confidence, right? I think is one of the, the two of the most, your ability to actually govern. Uh, or pointedly, right, are two of the, the most important pieces for this, that if we, we rush into it, that we sort of lost off, off the gag. I don't want to say how she's winning and losing. So I, I don't know if that, if that sort of makes sense to the team on the other side, right? And it may have us, you know, to, to, to look at revisiting sort of how we frame this. Uh, and so, you know, I would say, you know, if you want to change implementing, I was a different level to the uh, the competition plan. Again, that understanding, I think you're, you're broad.
Cat to Jolly.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to throw in that I'm, I'm supportive of the recommendation. I, it sounds like that's probably not gonna go ahead, um, kind of to um, the mayor's point about, you know, re-debating things over here. Um, you know, we might save, you know, five grand or something like that by re-debating something, you know, year after year, but we're losing, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars of, of staff time um, by, by doing that. So patting ourselves on the back for saving a small amount when, you know, we've, we've spent countless dollars and hours on um kind of the preparations and planning, I, I, I don't think it's good governance. And that's a big part of the reason why I'm supportive of, of these longer-term um budgets and longer-term plans. Um, as a municipality with over a billion dollars in capital assets and uh, what is our operating budget is five hundred million or something like that right now. Um, you know, when, when you're talking about budgets of that size, um, multi-year budgeting makes, makes a lot of sense because um, like we've discussed, you know, most of the services that we provide are, are static and certainly there's still opportunity to um be flexible year after year and because we do know that things happen. Um, you know, Council Hughes gave a really good example of twenty-two. It was a special time. Budgeting, um, and so I, I appreciate that, that, you know, those kind of last-minute changes are going to happen. But um, but I think this, this plan is great and, and I appreciate administration doing the work and bringing it forward. Um, and um, you know, I also appreciate that, that really we've seen um, aspects of this over the last few years in, you know, having those multi-year budgets and really understanding. in, you know, having those multi-year budgets and really understanding our, our debt servicing, I think. As many have done an amazing job, and your team has done an amazing job of holding our hands and really understanding our, our long-term um, commitments when it turned, when it comes to those big capital projects. And kind of really showing us that we can, you know, at the end of the day, we can't be everyone to, everything to everyone. Um, so having to make those decisions is, is part of our role, and having multi-year budgets kind of helps with that and helps us stay at a governance level. So that's all I have. Thanks, Mary.
Well, um, since you so eloquently debated and it's not on the floor, I might turn to you to make the motion, uh, when we're done questioning. With the understanding that if these motions get as is, that there will be.
I want to make a change. I want to make a change.
Would, but I, I think, Mary, I heard that there was a preference.
What would your new wording be?
Well, I, did you have something, Marta? I thought.
You would ask for five minutes if you wanted to.
Yeah, I just think it'd be more around demonstrate, uh, like an implementation plan or something like that. Because I, I, I think we're missing a piece of what it looks like. Like, I think Mr. Fletcher caught it in some of his comments, like a mock or something like that, that would identify. Because right now, I think, Madam Mayor, like, without, without that information, I'm afraid that we'll lose everything and we'll throw the proverbial baby over the bathwater here. So I don't want to lose this. I've seen it work, and I know it, it can work. But I just don't want to lose it. Do you want to go to number two? Number, number two.
Hold on, hold on, guys, let me talk to you.
So they, do you need five minutes?
No, I want to hear, so Diane?
I just wanted to ask if your concern is more around the operating budget side versus more so the capital side?
Well, that was my initial comment, yeah, good catch, because I thought if number two, no, if we, if we had a mock, it would incorporate what, what it would, what the total process would look like, both from an operating and from a, a capital, and how it'd be integrated together. Um, and, and, and I, that's kind of why I said, do we need number two? Because by number two, the way it reads right now, we're basically saying we're going to implement it in twenty-twenty-nine. I mean, I realize it's still open for the other council, could make any number of different changes, but to me, I think what I'm, what I'm missing is that, what I've discussed here for the last ten minutes is that mock, that comparison between the two processes. So I, that's why I don't think we need number two right now.
Like, I just, I don't know what I'm agreeing to.
Yeah.
I'm agreeing to a concept. I want to know what I'm agreeing to. Especially if I'm so involved in the budget process, which dramatically changing this, I want to know what I'm agreeing to. So, um, you, you need five minutes to get some better wording. Do you want to work?
I just.
Ken, are you going to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause if Natalie does, you're just going to make, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so why don't you work with, uh?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, if you give us five minutes, we'll come to you with an op, and, and maybe add, and all of you guys come on.
The assumptions that you've experienced are not.